Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April 12th, 2016. The opening prayer will be given by Deacon Eugene Riott from the Holy Trinity Church. Please rise.
Thank you. God our heavenly Father, we gather in your presence, expressing our thanksgiving for all the blessings you have seen fit to bestow upon us. May we use these blessings to glorify you and improve the life and well-being of our family, our friends, and our neighbors. We ask your continued blessings on those who guard us and protect us from harm, the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces, serving at home and abroad, especially those serving in areas of violence and conflict. We ask that you extend your blessing to all police, fire, and emergency personnel, and that you comfort their families who anxiously await their return. We ask that you sustain and bring comfort to those who struggle to live in more torn nations and in countries suffering from acts of terrorism. We ask that you graciously hear the prayers for peace offered to you in today's troubled world, and that you bestow patience, understanding, and civility upon families, communities, and nations, and that you grant wisdom and guidance to all who serve in public office. With confidence and trust that you hear and respond to every prayer raised to you, we humbly offer our amen.
We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes, here.
Laterno.
Here.
Maroon.
Here.
Shertel.
Present.
Sullivan.
Very here.
Testa. Zandry. Chairman Savoni.
Here. Councilor Zandry has advised me that he caught a later train and will be here as soon as he can. Although it's on the agenda, we are not recognizing the champions for youth tonight. We are going to put that back on an agenda when they are actually not on vacation. Looking further ahead, item 10 regarding the appointment to the Historic Properties Commission for a five-year term, that item is being withdrawn from tonight's agenda as well. Ten.
No, it's ten.
They have the old agenda.
They knew it.
On the revised agenda, it's item 10. All right. Item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through T.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we have made appointments with the passing of the consent agenda. So, Mr. Porto, if you would come forward to be sworn. And Kimberly Pazani and Lisa Chuba, is Ms. LaFond here? No? Okay. Appointments to the Public Celebrations Committee, please come forward to be sworn. All right, on to item four. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer period.
Don Kennedy, Bull Avenue. A couple of weeks ago, I think it was two or three council meetings ago, I inquired about financial reports, and you basically said that yes, you had financial reports, and that you felt that if I went to Controller Bowes that I could get financial reports. I've since talked to Controller Bowes, and we're in the process of actually getting the financials, and he told me that sometime the next week or two, he's going to have things to me. But what triggered this conversation tonight, or at this point I want to raise tonight, is that the financials up to a letter that I found in the Freedom of Information, financials were only available on paper, and in order for me to get the financials, I would have had to spend, if we were to get the whole, all of the financials, it would have been forty dollars to fifty dollars to get them printed. And I don't think that would be reasonable to do that every month. And what I found is under the Freedom of Information Commission that there is a clause that if information is on a computer, it can be made available to the general public in electronic format. So, one of the things that I've asked the Controller is to send me stuff electronically. What I really find weird is if I want to get this every month, I'd have to send him an FOI every month. No? Better idea?
No, if you just, which you already have done, an FOI request, if you wanted to maybe just send me something quickly in writing as a follow-up to say, keep me on that list for, and I believe it's 12 months. So, you don't have to write every 12, you don't have to update it once a year.
Okay. What other information can we get from the town? Like, I noticed that your budget books were this thick, and the budget document that came out was maybe half an inch. So, there's definitely a lot of information available in the town that should be available either on the website or somewhere else, without having to go through the whole rigmarole of sending FOIs to everybody in order to find out what's going on. Is there a way to, like, Controller, and correct me if I say anything, one of the things that you said is that you're very limited in terms of space on the Internet. And I find that very difficult to understand because disk-cheap is one of the least expensive, disk space is one of these expensive items around right now. So, is there a way to put more information out on the Internet, on the financial webpage, so that when one wants to see something, he doesn't have to go to Town Hall or, you know, do all of the steps, FOIs, et cetera, et cetera, in order to find out what's going on?
You're welcome to review one of the books that has all of the information. There's far too much information there. It's all the requests from the departments. There's far too much to be scanning and putting out and constantly changing. If you want to review one of the books, you can review it, have copies of pages that you're interested in, but for us to be constantly dealing with all of that, it makes, it's not efficient and it's, it makes no sense. Most people are not interested in that kind of volume of information. So, if you want to look at something, request to see the book and look it over, and we can make copies of whatever information you want.
How about information that's already scanned?
It's not. It's not. These were requests from departments. So, copies were made and included with the budget to reflect what was requested by the department and other information related to that, and that is included in the books for the council because they're making judgments on what the budget should ultimately, what dollar figure should be approved at. But all of that information is way beyond what we should be going through, all of that effort to make available. It is available, but just come in and review it, and we can make copies.
At my expense?
Whatever the rule is, per page.
Well, that's the point, is that I can ask for information electronically, and I don't want to do that, but I will if I have to, because I'm not going to spend all kinds of, if it's on a computer, it has to be made available electronically.
We disagree. I'm not going to debate this forever. If you want to see the information, you can come in and see it.
But if I want copies, I have to pay for it?
It's correct, just like every other person in the public. If we make it free to you, we'd have to make it free to everyone else, and the policy is pursuant to FOI, there's a charge per page.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Certainly. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. My question's going to change now. It's a comment to the mayor, just so he's aware that, I think it was 2009, there was an FOI case with the town. If it is available on a computer anywhere, you must, or if requested, provide it to whoever asks for it. The only thing that that person has to provide is the medium you're giving, if you're going to put it on a disk, you have to provide a disk, and that's all you're required to do, Mr. Mayor. Otherwise, you would be in violation of FOI, and you can, I think the case was in 2009 against the town, and the town lost. So, that's why it is provitable.
That's your opinion? I don't think all of it's on a computer.
Oh, I'm not, if it's not on the computer, then you don't have to worry, that's separate. But if it's on a computer, no matter where, then, and it's a public document, because that speaks of the town, anybody who asks for it can receive it. And there is an FOI case, like I said, against that, and you can take a look, and you'll see. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to go before Mr. Gross comes back? Mr. Gross?
Yeah, that was an aside for the mayor, because what, how his response was. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. There's a few things that in the last, in the budget that I hope the council will ask, and I don't know if they will, but over the years, the town has gone to self-insurance for health insurance, and we do have property casualty insurance that we do through an agent and so forth, and we've been with the same agent, from what I understand, for many, many years. And we also do a third-party administrator, which is more in the health end of the insurance also, which we don't send out to bid. And I know there's a couple of people up there in the insurance industry, they, I think it's time that if you're looking to save dollars, those are two items, whether you're going to want to go self-insurance, or at least the TPA, third-party administrator, should be put out to bid. When other communities have done that, and, because Blue Cross does ours, if, when, I think it was West Hartford and North Haven, and other communities had decided to go out, it forces people to sharpen their pencils, and you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for some of these communities. So, anything we can save would be worthwhile, because there's, you know, people are looking for fireworks. I know you guys are going to go through the budget, you're going to look for little, and rightfully so. I'm not saying you shouldn't, you can do whatever you want to do, but you're going to be looking for small amounts here and there. These are big amounts that are sitting out there, that all you need to do is just put out an RFP, and you could potentially save tens of thousands of dollars a year, and I would hope the new councilors who are in insurance would take a look at those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close the public question and answer period, move on to item six, which is a proposal by Lend Lease, Lend Lease Company regarding installing solar panels at the Good evening.
Evening. Just a procedural question. I understand you guys have a copy of a presentation I made previously. I have a slightly shorter one, if you guys want to run through that, or we can run through the longer version. It's up to you.
If you have nine copies of the shorter one, we'll take it. Can you give one to the clerk as well? Thank you. Please identify yourself for the record.
Yes. So, good evening, gentlemen. My name is Chris Pitney. I am a development manager with Lend Lease. So, if it's helpful for you all, I was just going to run through the presentation this evening. Feel free to interrupt at any point with questions. I wanted to just start off by introducing Lend Lease as a company.
Closer.
Closer. Okay. Is that better? Yeah? Okay. So, Lend Lease, for most of you who wouldn't have heard of it, Lend Lease is an Australian company. It's a multinational company. Its focus is infrastructure, real estate, and construction. In the U.S., it's mostly known as a construction company. It has a large background as Bovis, which does a lot of work in New York City, building skyscrapers, notably putting up some large projects right now, such as 157 Park, a $750 million. Don't quote me on the number of stories, but a large skyscraper in New York City. Did the renovation of Grand Central about two years ago, and has done quite a large number of projects. If you flipped to slide three, there's some of the general overview of the company in terms of some of our financials and employee count. If you flipped to slide four, it just shows where we are. We are about 2,000 employees in the U.S.-North America area. Our U.S. headquarters is in New York City, and we have offices throughout most of the major cities in the United States. Within Lend Lease North America, I sit within a group that's Lend Lease Energy, that focuses on energy development, energy construction, and energy efficiency projects. This is slide five now. We look at basically anything related to that, mostly focused on renewable projects. We've been doing this for quite some time, and we have quite an established track record with a fair amount of government contracts. We do a lot of work with the Department of Defense on military housing, which is actually how we got into, a lot of our energy work is the Department of Defense interest in renewable energy. And to that end, I just talk, I just mentioned, we have a whole slide deck that talks through some of our construction experience. I didn't want to go through all of that, so I just did a highlight project here. We are not the largest of solar constructors in the U.S., and we're certainly not the smallest. We look at what we consider medium-sized projects, and this one's representative in terms of the complexity and nature that we deliver. So, with that, if there aren't any questions on Lend Lease, I will jump into our proposal. So, what we are looking at is, if you gentlemen are aware, over on Pent Road, there is an old landfill, I believe it was capped in 1986. That site has a fair amount of usable terrain for solar. There are right-of-ways across it which will not be usable. There are slopes that will not be usable. All of this is subject to further due diligence. What we are proposing is a ground-mounted solar array. There will be, which is important and somewhat unique to this project, a fairly substantial energy storage system, so battery energy storage system, which will also connect into the system, and then obviously the electrical infrastructure. Moving on to slide eight, we just give a general representation of the area in which it will sit. There are some areas, this is tentative, there are some, already some areas in consultation with the town offices that will need to be revised on that graphic, and I would say that all of what I'm proposing today is fairly early days and subject to due diligence, so I would just put that out there as a caveat of, obviously, as we gather information, plans will change. So, the area that's shown there is the areas that we believe generally are suitable for solar, minus the large transmission right-of-ways, and an area that we believe may be good for the electrical infrastructure for the project. So, why this site? So, this site is beneficial in terms of, it has obviously good connection and access to the transmission infrastructure. It's in an area that is otherwise difficult to use for many other land use purposes. And, sorry, just looking through to make sure I covered that. And this also meets a Connecticut-sponsored goal. I think that's possibly one of the most important ones, is the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, in my opinion, rightly believes in placing solar facilities on landfills rather than taking up agricultural or rural land. So, moving to the next slide, what we're looking at is generally a pretty conventional solar system. Due to the landfill nature, we would not be looking to disturb the soil. We need to gather more information about the precise nature of the cap on the landfill, but obviously, we're not looking to get down into any soils or anything that may be contaminated. The battery storage components will be modular units, which again are, like the solar system, relatively easily, easy to install and relatively easy to decommission at the end of life of the facility. I've just shown you, since most people aren't familiar with the technology, I've shown you a representative unit there at the bottom right of that slide, that just for scale is a 20-foot-long unit by about nine feet unit, nine feet wide, and the height with the thermal management system on the top is about 12 feet. And obviously, that's a representative unit. We have not selected any vendors at this point. The other thing that makes this site attractive is the potential area around it. There is directly to the south land that contains a contamination plume that, while still usable, is probably harder to use for a variety of reasons, for other purposes, and that we are in discussions with MIRA regarding the potential use for this project. So, if there, I'll pause for a second, if you gentlemen have any questions on the proposed facility.
Any questions from the council?
I have a few, but I could wait to the end, if that's a general agreement with everybody else up here.
So, it appears. So, looks like you're getting bombarded at the end.
I look forward to it. So, just, I talked through just a couple of the benefits in the next two slides. So, the direct benefits to the town, I think, are relatively straightforward in terms of, there would be a direct lease payment for the land that was actually used for the facilities. Now, keep in mind, the parcel is larger and has many existing facilities, so we would only be using portions of the parcel. Then the other major revenue source would be for the improvements that are made on the land, those would fall under the property tax base, you know, to be determined in the future, but there would be property tax income to the town as well. There would also be payments during the option period. Those payments are pretty de minimis in terms of the scale of when you look at the overall project, but there would be those direct payments as well. When you look at the indirect benefits, I think it's a, just a lot of good story in terms of job creation during construction, a small but sizable amount during operations, and then also just a advantage in terms of bringing some of this technology into this area. I think battery storage is a potential for growth, and it's a good experience for people to have exposure to that technology. I also think it takes advantage of land that's otherwise sitting vacant. So, with that, I'll talk about specifically, so I've talked about our proposal and what some of the benefits might be to the town. I'll also talk briefly about, so what is, why are we coming to you now? This land's been here for 30 years. So, what we're actually, the opportunity we're looking at is, right, for you who are not aware, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, sorry, I'm on slide 14 now, gentlemen, is put out an RFP for clean energy sources. That clean energy source includes solar projects up to 20 megawatts and energy storage projects. So, we are looking, with the town's permission, to submit this proposed facility under that request for proposal to the state, and we believe that this could be a very competitive project if we are allowed to do so. The timing from the state is relatively tight. As you look through the slide there, proposals are due into them on May 4th, and they hope to get, select actually quite quickly. So, that is why we are approaching you now at this time. So, I talked through just a little bit of the near-term schedule and the longer-term schedule. So, as I said, we are basically moving through our proposal now. We're moving through our, what we call our initial due diligence, initial screening phase, and doing proposal drafting with the idea of submitting proposal May 4th. I also talked through the longer-term schedule of the project, and I would caution already in conversations with some people who are pretty knowledgeable on this, they rightly pointed out the schedule I have in there is quite optimistic, so I tried to highlight that is realistically, what I've shown there on slide 16 for the overall construction, development, and construction schedule is sort of the best case, more realistically, based off some of the facilities that would need to be built, and perhaps some of the approvals, that what I show is the first half of 2017 would likely be the first half of 2018, and accordingly have that bumped to the schedule. So, it would be some period of time where, before the lease payments and property tax payments came into the town, it'd be another few years if this proposed project moves forward. So, what are we looking for right now, just moving to the next slide, is if this is an opportunity that's interesting to you gentlemen and to the town after consideration, what we're, in the very short term, what we'd be looking for is some sort of demonstration of commitment that you gentlemen would be comfortable with us providing to the state to say, we are comfortable with the general proposed project and comfortable with this land use and have commitment to it. We would propose a letter of intent to signify that, and then in longer term, we would do an option agreement, which would basically be more of a binding document to say, during this development period, if we, as the developer, satisfy all of our due diligence, we have the option, it's basically the right to enter into the lease agreement, which would be pre-agreed before we sign the option agreement. So, that's what we're, not to get too confusing, what we're looking for in the very short term is just sort of, again, if this is a proposal that's interesting to you, is just that letter of intent or a letter of willingness and commitment from the town. In the slide 18, I ran through, and apologies for the bit of the fine print here, a bit more of the documents, again, what we're looking for realistically, based off counsel from meetings with the members of the town offices, rather than try to go through the legal complexities of reviewing an option agreement in such short period of time that we move to a more generalized, non-binding letter of intent. There are a few binding provisions in the letter of intent, but they basically have to do with governing law, will be Connecticut, and that will keep confidential matters within the letter of intent. So, it's, the binding provisions are very small. So, that is what we're looking for. So, that is what we're looking for, and I think I'd open it up to questions at this point.
So, I do have, I think you, if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, you heard conversations of FOI, our Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, sir.
You're only on the agenda tonight to make this presentation. And I just want to make you understand that in order for us to do something like express intent, we'd have to put it on the agenda that we intended to take some form of action like that or make some form of statement like that. So, forgive us that we can't express that to you before you leave tonight. We do have to follow a process.
Yes, sir, I understand that and I appreciate that. That's no problem, and I will work with the town offices to get on the agenda for the following meeting after you've had a chance to consider.
Okay.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, our earlier meeting with Mr. Pitney, it was clear, we'd have to have a draft of a letter of intent and any other options or anything, and all of the terms of that, that would be brought for an approval. But, we thought it was best for you to have some idea of what was being discussed rather than just come in and say, "Here."
Thank you. Works for me. All right. Questions, Councilor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So, yeah, I do have, I do have a few questions, and I looked over the longer presentation that you sent us, and I appreciate this condensed version. So, one of the questions that I have, I see on your outline map on page, I'm on page eight right now, where you have the white, I'll call them white shaded areas, there are white highlights there. Is that where you estimate where the solar arrays would be going on that site?
Yes, sir, subject to further due diligence, but yes, sir.
All right. So, that would be like your first best guess where you think they could all go?
Yes, sir. And in consultation with some of the town offices, the portion of the northwest has already been identified as likely going away.
And that sets up, you know, some of the remainder of my questions. So, you have this outlined as a 10 to 40-megawatt facility. Now, based on, based on what you've, you've made the assumption could be put up there, can you explain to me why that's so wide? I mean, like a regular generation plant, you know what your maximums and your minimums are, but, and I realize a lot of this has to do with how many days of sun there are, how much capacity to store. I'm just trying to get an understanding of, is that a normal, is the outline here based on, gee, we're not sure how much footprint we can use, or that's the normal swing because we can't account for rain, sunshine?
No, sir. So, yes, thank you for highlighting that issue. I know I've received that question once or twice. So, one is, we are still in relatively early phases, so there's still a fair amount of information to be gathered. But, the reason for the range actually has to do with the energy storage. The range for the solar is probably relatively well-known, closer to 10 to 15. I'm hoping we can get up to 20 if we get some additional footprint. But, the solar footprint is relatively well-known. You can do some calculations based off number of megawatts per acre, or, sorry, number of acres per megawatt. So, what we're really looking at right now is the economics of how much energy storage to put on. So, when I talk about a 10 to 40-megawatt project, it's the combined output of the solar and the energy storage. The energy storage is a rather dense footprint, so realistically, if we said it was, again, as a combined site, 15 megawatts of solar, the balance of anything else would be energy storage output.
And it's been a little while since I looked at solar systems of this size. I used to, in my former life, I worked at a power plant, so I was always interested in where the technology was going even back then. The batteries have become more compact and more dense. They take up less space and actually, even the space and footprint that they take up on the ground, they're almost more vertical than they are horizontal. So, and a lot of times, I see these setups where you've got basically the array and a storage brick behind it which encases a lot of the battery supplies. Is this the type of design that we would see here?
No, sir. We would look to centralize the batteries a little bit more. I have seen that, which you mentioned, as a design. The issue with that is it's more difficult to thermally manage the batteries. If you centralize the batteries, you can centralize your thermal management system. The batteries need to be maintained at a certain temperature.
Temperature, right. Okay, thank you. I don't want to lead with the question, so I'll just ask it plain. When you, if this proposal were to go through and you'd be all set up and interconnected, are you planning to, is this power intended to be put on the grid, sold to Wallingford, sold to the grid in general, sold to, you know, a business that's interested? I mean, what was the idea? And if it's proprietary and you can't explain it, I understand it, so.
So, under the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, RFP, I'm going to do my best to get this right, so I might get an act or two wrong. But, basically, as the way I understand it, the outcome of that RFP, so through a previous law that has to do with the renewable portfolio standard, the major utilities in Connecticut, Eversource and United Illuminating, are required to buy a certain amount of clean energy. And so, the Connecticut Deep is holding this RFP to facilitate their procurement of clean energy. So, the winners or the selected parties under the state RFP will basically be turned over to United Illuminating and Eversource, and they will buy the respective portions of the output from the facility.
So, the setup is almost, you know, your site's going to produce, and it's not even as if you're just going to be dumping on the grid and hoping a buyer comes along. We've already established that the two major players on the interconnect system, they have a requirement to buy so much anyway. They're already waiting to buy because there's a shortage of the amount of clean energy that they're required to purchase anyway.
Yes, sir. I couldn't speak to the shortage amount, but they have requirements.
They have a requirement. They're not, I've looked it up. I just was curious. They're short because there's only so much, there's only so much hydroelectric, there's only so much, you know, thermal gas. So, I'm relatively excited to hear about this because, you know, as the proposal outlines, we've got a top of a landfill we really can't do anything with. With respect to, I guess, we could call it like a stage two or consideration down the road, that additional 52 acres that's all part of MIRA, which is the old incinerator down there, all the property that's been condemned and capped off, the old Henry's trailer park and such down there. Given the review of the two maps, is there even an estimation on what might be able to be added on here?
Oh, sorry, sir. When I mentioned the 10 to 15-megawatts solar output, that assumes the inclusion of the MIRA land.
Okay, so, the overall discussion is not only just on the landfill, but it's also the add-on property?
The proposed project is going to look much more attractive to us as a developer if both properties are involved. We are in discussions with MIRA directly about their property, and as far as I'm aware, we would only be in discussions with the town of Wallingford for the landfill property. So, we would approach both parties independently and then, and then bring them together under a project umbrella.
Okay, that's good to know, because, you know, just my own thing, when I read expansion, I read it like, okay, we want to try to set up here first, and then, down the road, you know, we're looking to jump into the other area. So, it looks, it looks to me like in order to get the setup and build out what you're talking about, it requires both the landfill and the MIRA property.
I wouldn't say that it requires, but it's certainly much more attractive from a development perspective.
All right, let me rephrase it then. You wouldn't be able to get closer to the maximum without both?
That's absolutely correct.
All right, so, even if something were not to go through with one property owner, it still might be possible to go forward with a smaller setup?
Yes, sir.
But, the most attractive thing is the fact that both of those could join right there?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. If we were able to go forward with this at some point, it's a pretty aggressive schedule the way you outline it. You outlined that, you know, effectively, once all the agreements are signed, all the stuff is hashed out, it's, inside of two to three years, this would be up and running, it sounds.
Yes, sir. Solar projects generally install very quickly. I think some of the, when you look at the overall project, or proposed project schedule, some of the longer timelines will be the interconnection facilities. So, we would be proposing to interconnect to high-voltage lines, and if you've been through the process on that, there's a substantial application and study process followed by a substantial planning and installation process, and that will most likely be the gating item. Now, due to the nature of the land as well, there'll probably be a fair amount of environmental and permitting review, which will extend the development time. But, when you actually get to construction, you know, somewhere in the nine, 10, 11 months, you know, that would be very doable for us.
Well, I, that was, that's the extent of the questions that I had right now for you. I may end up with one or two more depending on something that one of my colleagues says that may ring a bell for me. But, I, I'm real encouraged to take a good, hard look at this, because for the town to be able to get some lease payments out of property that is effectively just sitting there, and then, of course, tax revenue from, you know, all of the commercial pieces of equipment that are up there, I think it's a win-win, especially because it'll definitely help add to the, you know, the grand list, which we're having stabilization issues with specifically this year. So, I'm really looking forward to some more positive conversation on this. And thank you for taking the time to come tonight and answer my questions.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify something, given our franchise situation, relative to the questions about who the, who could be the purchaser of the power, this would have to be directly connected to the 115 KV lines of the grid. It cannot run into our distribution system. So, it would require a substation, ring bus, or whatever. So, there is some improvements to the property that would be necessary in order to allow the electricity to be generated there and then sold to Eversource or UI. So, it cannot come into our distribution system, so that's clear.
I'll make the assumption that your corporation's aware of that. You wouldn't be tying into the substations in the back on the Wallingford Electric.
Yes, sir, we are aware of that. We've had a few phone conversations with the Wallingford Electrical, Electric Municipality.
Well, I mean, I mean, understanding that's just another positive, because that's just more equipment to be on the grounds, so.
Yes, sir. And that was what I was mentioning when Mr. Mayor said the 115 KV, that was the high-voltage system I was referring to, and due to the fact that we will have to connect to that is the extended timeline for the interconnection process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, sir. Counselor Zandry covered a lot of the stuff that I wanted to go into, and I thank him for that. I noticed on slide nine, there's an indication, the last bullet, and it says, "The potential to provide Wallingford Municipal Electric with renewable energy," if that becomes a And what is that, like a government regulatory requirement?
Yeah, I probably should just take this off. This is, this would be far down the road if, yeah, if the Connecticut government changed its mind and said renewable portfolio standards now apply to municipal, municipal electrics as well, which, to my understanding, they currently don't. So, this was an eventuality down the road if, 10 years into the facility's operation, the Wallingford became interested, for whatever reason, in buying some of the solar output, there might be an opportunity to do a little bit of site expansion and already have a lot of the facility built out.
Yeah, that's the second part of the clause, but the middle part of the clause is sort of like Agenda 21 sort of stuff. And sort of jumped out at me.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, gentlemen, yes, next time I will remove that because I've received.
Well, I, you know, I just, you know, it's part of the thing. Mayor, do we currently have another potential use for this property?
Not that I'm aware of. There's continual monitoring for methane. It's really being, it's under the auspices of MIRA at this point to maintain the landfill, which has been capped, and as was stated, they're not going to put foundations down into the landfill, all sit on top of the ground, recognizing that it is capped and it can't be disturbed. But, we don't have any plans for it, no.
Okay, so, there's no, no plans in the, you know, because I see other towns with the old landfills are doing like hydroponics and that kind of stuff. There's nothing on the horizon?
At this point, there are no plans for that.
Okay. And then, I think it was an issue with the, they call these solar farms, I guess, in, I think it was Southington, where people complained about reflections. And what does your company potentially do to minimize complaints about reflections from, you know, neighboring neighbors?
Yes, sir. So, I would say, first off, this is one of the reasons that we find the site attractive is that it's not close to residential, it's in an industrial-zoned area, and so, we first off hope that there aren't too many people who are sensitive to it. But, to answer your question, the, basically, it's in the equipment you select. There's anti-reflective coatings for most of the modules, so you can make sure you select a module provider that has that, and then, in your racking system, which is where you might get other substantial amount of reflections, you look for a matte finish that doesn't reflect the light. So, it basically has to do a lot with your technology selection. There's not, I'd have to look into more detailed, I'd have to look into further if you wanted some sort of metric around like lumen reflection amounts at like property lines. That's not something I'm familiar with off the top of my head. But, generally, we try to, the less light that's reflected, the more that's captured and converted into electricity, and so, generally, generally, the problem solves itself due to the drive to have more efficient panels.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, because this would be a long-term relationship, and certainly, you know, what is, you know, a treed area currently, as the town grows, becomes something else, and even commercial entities complain about reflections. So, that's of concern, and I know your industry is dealing with that, so, you know, that'll be in the back of my mind. And then, does the town, does the state have some sort of financial benefit for your company in taking a, basically, unused property and converting it to an ecological benefit?
There's no direct subsidies to the developer, sir. What, the way that they will, so, they have this, I'm not sure if you'd call it, it's certainly not a policy, but they have this initiative, I'll say, to develop solar on landfills, and the way that that's reflected in terms of helping it move forward is when that they look at the proposals that come into the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for this, under this RFP. They will add points to the score for people who choose to use landfills.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Lutler-Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Is Len Lease, or, I'm going to ask any of its subsidiaries, involved with the North Haven Solar on their abandoned landfill?
No, sir, we are not.
Okay. Are you, have any other projects in Connecticut?
Yes, sir. We had a small rooftop project, I believe it was of Walgreens. It was a relatively small project for us. I think it was about a half a megawatt.
And no other projects of this size in Connecticut?
Not in Connecticut, no, sir.
All right. Where would be the closest?
Geographically, sir? I'd have to check into that. I know we had a 15-megawatt in North Carolina that we did last year, but we might have some closer. I'd just have to check our, you know, our, with our UBC group.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge, do you know that, is there any tax restrictions from the town? Would we be collecting the full property tax on this, or is there a special rate that we would, you know, that we couldn't charge?
That question has come up before, sir. I think the, the short answer is I'm not a tax expert, and I haven't heard back from our tax, in-house tax consultants. But, the understanding is generally, the value of the land isn't going to be taxed, it'll be the improvements to it, and then, there'll be a recognition of the asset value has to do with the amount of revenue that the asset brings in. And I understood there was a process through the assessor's office, and I may, I may be speaking out of turn here, but, to do the valuation of the, considered valuation for tax purposes, as to whether there are any exceptions or exclusions for any of the equipment. There are none that I'm aware of. There are some that apply on sales and use tax, but none that I'm aware of for property tax.
Okay. Okay, I'm good. A lot of my questions have been answered already, so I'll defer. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Pitney.
Thanks, sir.
Are you making?
Are you making any changes to the overall topography of the land?
Not within the town of Wallingford, so, I should misspeak, not on the landfill itself. There's a small portion of the town of Wallingford land where there might need to be some civil works done for the electrical infrastructure, but not on the landfill itself, no, sir.
So landfill will remain as is, so the soil there won't be disturbed?
That is correct.
Okay, and Mayor, if I may, a question to you, please. Does this project need to be approved by planning and zoning, go through the regular course?
I think it would follow the usual course, right, there'd undoubtedly have to be a site plan approval at some point, et cetera. But our, our involvement at this point would be for them to be able to apply. I think their short-term issue is being able to show that they have a site with a letter of intent and any ancillary commitments from the town, that it is a real project here.
I'm good with that, I understand that part, but I mean, down the road, and when we, they get that.
Beyond that, it would be the normal course to approve.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Certainly documents from the council as far as the land lease and then planning and zoning. And I, I don't know whether there'd be other issues with utilities and wetlands or whatever.
Very good, I'm good, thank you. Mr. Pitney, on slide 13, you talk about the indirect benefits to the town of Wallingford, local job creation, so forth. Who normally installs these systems for you?
We are in part a large construction company, so we do self-perform.
You do it on your own?
A fair amount, sir, we do some contracting, but we do self-perform most.
Because you're estimating about 120 jobs during construction, so those would be outside of your company?
A fair amount would be within, I'd have to get back to you on the breakdown splits, sir. I don't know that off the top of my head about how much is in-house personnel versus how much is brought in, or how much is hired, field personnel is hired directly.
I would, I would appreciate that information because you're showing 120 jobs, and if they're all within your current corporation, they're of no help to us as far as local employment. The 10 part-time you're talking about during operations, what would the 10 part-timers do?
Yes, sir, it's the, and a lot of that would have to do with the overall facility. But the, the solar facility itself requires relatively little maintenance. It would be more related to the energy storage facility, which requires a little bit more maintenance. And so they would basically come in, I mean, they would be involved in the solar as well, but you're basically troubleshooting the system as it arises and then doing periodic maintenance and inspection checks. And, and that applies to the solar as well, but more of the time would be spent on the energy storage.
And we'd be looking at hopefully local people to staff those jobs?
Yes, sir, I mean, certainly, certainly they would want to move here becau, to the area because you need to be relatively close.
I mean, I mean, local people filling those positions possibly, local Wallingford residents. I'm not talking about moving people, I'm just talking about.
Yes, sir, I think, yes, sir, I mean, certainly that would be beneficial.
Okay, and the last question, my colleagues did a great job going through most of this. Does the current methane situation there mean anything to this installation? Is there any, anything you have to care for? Because we've got tonnage of rotting garbage not far below the soil.
Yes, sir, the, so a couple of considerations. We have to still obviously provide access for people who are monitoring those wells. And so that would be part of the planning approval to make sure that there was appropriate access. In terms of the methane itself, it is not a direct concern that we are aware of. We are more probably concerned about the process that's unlocking it and the settling of the, of the system over time as the landfill settles.
Okay, I'll sum it up by saying, I think it's a great opportunity for a piece of property that would otherwise just sit there. So I'm kind of excited to see what you're going to come up with next and, you know, where we go from here. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, good evening. Nice presentation, thank you very much for that. I think it's a great idea so far, I love, I love the way it looks. Appears that, you know, that the, I can see why you, why you would be interested in submitting the RFP. The state is requesting that, you know, you try to find property like this that really has no other use. Just over the weekend, I was driving home through Meriden, past their water treatment facility, and I just happened to notice all the arrays of solar panels that they have on their landfill over there. I was just thinking to myself, boy, it'd be nice to see some of those in Wallingford someday. I'm optimistic about this, I like the idea. When you talk about on, on slide 12 about benefits to the town, increased revenue through direct lease payments, that makes sense? Then you say payments made during the option period, I just wasn't sure what would be the difference. And the option period is, I thought that was referencing about possible purchase, but the option period is just the time of the lease?
No, sir, let me, let me walk you through that, it is a bit confusing because usually an option is an option to purchase. This is an option to lease, so.
Okay.
So the letter of intent would sort of get us through the first couple of months. If the project progresses after that, what we would ask to do is enter into an option agreement. The option agreement allows us to go through what we call the, the, well, I'll call it the development phase for simplicity. And so what the option agreement would do is, when we sign the option agreement, we would also be agreeing to at that time the form of the lease agreement that would be used. And then, so the option period says you have X amount of time as the developer to do your due diligence, to finish permitting, to finish your planning, to finish all of this. And then when we, as the developer, are ready, we would essentially send notice and say, we have completed our development phase, we're ready to move into construction, and we would request to execute, now execute the form of the lease. And so the option payments, as you would imagine, because we haven't started construction, there's no work going on in the site, are pretty small relative to the lease payments.
Kind of like, sort of like a, a holding, some payments just to hold?
Exactly, sir.
Hold the commitment, and then there's a time period, and then you say, okay, this looks like it's going to work.
Exactly, sir.
Let's pull the, let's go, and then things kick in and we sign the formal lease, thank you.
Yep.
When you talk about megawatts, what is the time period for that? Are those megawatts per month, year, what is it?
So, so, uh, uh, let's see, a, a megawatt is, is just the, the rate, sir. So it's the, so obviously, the solar output isn't constant, but, but what we mean by that is at maximum output, so if the sun is shutting the brightest and the energy storage is all discharging into the grid, if you looked at the meter at that point, you would see it registering X number of megawatts, whether that be 20 or 40. And then in terms of the energy behind it, the megawatt hours or kilowatt hours, that just depends on how long, you know, we keep pushing that power out.
Okay, those megawatt hours, okay.
The megawatt hours.
Okay, thanks. And I'm, I'm just curious, how does the, how does the storage component of this project actually work? And I, I understand what storage is, I'm just, are you pump them up and then take them somewhere or tie into it when it's stored up? How does that work?
So I'm going to be, if it's all right, I'll be a little bit vague because we, we haven't made our proposal to the state. But generally, we will, if you look at the use for electricity versus solar production, it's relatively close, but the use is a couple hours behind it. So solar might be on a day like today, finishing its production 5:00 or 6:00 PM, but electrical use is still going pretty heavily until 10:00 PM. So some of the storage would just be shifting that electricity and making it available slightly later in the evening. So that would be some of the storage that we would be looking at. The other parts of the storage we would be looking at is actually to shift from very, very low, sort of charge the facility, not from the solar, but to charge the facility from the grid at very, very low usage at like 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And then again, do the discharge during the most heavily used hours, such as, you know, 7:00 PM or 8:00 PM at night.
So it really allows you to, it allows you to regulate the flow, i- i- for, keeping it really simple?
Yes, sir, it allows you, yes, certainly for the solar output, it allows you to regulate the flow, and that's very helpful. And then it also allows you to provide power when it is most in demand, which is very valuable to the utilities.
Thanks, that was just a curiosity question, really having nothing to do with whether we'd be in favor or not. Okay, I'm all set, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, certainly.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, great presentation, Mr. Pitney. Just my co-counselman, Ivans, have asked most of the, the good questions, I just have a couple of follow-ups. The town, in terms of the lease agreement, the town is, is the lessor of just the property, is that correct? So Len Lease would own the solar array and all the power, et cetera?
That is correct, yep, and all renewable benefits as well, sir.
And then any liability for damage to the, to the, from, resulting from or to the solar array would fall on Len Lease?
You've hit on a very good question, sir, obviously, the liabilities are potentially quite large. So that is something we would probably need further discussion on, just in terms of, we would take general liabilities, but, but there would need to be a little bit of a discussion on. So, so obviously, if we were negligent and did something that caused it, that would be fine. But we would need to probably have a little bit of discussion on the liabilities if, if some large, very large event were to occur and, you know, we found something. So I, I guess I would just try to be transparent in. We would certainly, I mean, the, the general intent that I would offer is we would certainly take responsibility for any issues that we caused. If there was just an issue that arose throughout time, we would need to have a discussion how we handled that.
Okay, all right, so to be discussed. And then my only last question, what would be the useful life of the solar array?
So typically, most people think of the solar array as 20 to 25 years. The, the panels are still good, after that, they just have to, I mean, their, their output degrades over time. So we, the lease that we would propose extends, I believe, out to 35 years in total. And then there's provisions, obviously, for removing the equipment at the end of useful life.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just going back, there's a question about the option. And I just want to understand, when procedurally, would the terms of an option go into place here?
Yes, sir, so, and stop me if I'm not answering your question, but we would need to agree to an option agreement before we entered into any other major agreements. So we would need to negotiate the option agreement if the project moved forward properly sometime in the Ju, July, August, September timeframe and be able to sign it before we executed any other agreements on the project. Because obviously, we as the developer don't want to expend a bunch of money and make a bunch of commitments only to discover that there's an issue with the land and we, the project can't move forward.
So would you expect procedurally the next time that you're before us on this, that we'd be entering into an option at that time?
I, I think based off the short timeframe of the, of the RFP from the state, that that's, while it would be beneficial, isn't realistic. So, so what we would propose in the short term is a, a letter of intent, hopefully in the next few weeks, very, very short-term timeframe. And then if the project gets notification of interest or success through the state, that, that we would come back in the summer and discuss the option agreement at that. You know, we've already roughly discussed some of the ideas and, and general, general terms of such agreement. But we would come back at that time in the summer, in July or August, and discuss the details of that agreement.
I'm just looking at it from both sides, you know, I like the income for the town and the option, but I'm also looking at it from, from your side, and that your company has identified a site. You have competitors, you don't want some other competitor to come in and take that site. So I, I just don't understand why you wouldn't be entering into an option relatively soon.
We would be glad to, don't get me, we would be very glad to, I, again, I just, for us, it's just the, the reality of what we assume is going to be, because when you agree to the option, you have to agree to the form of the lease. So it's a, it's a fair amount of legal review that, that comes with agreeing to the option. So based off the timeline that we have, we thought it was more realistic to try for a letter of intent first, just due to the, to the, what we expect to be a reasonable legal review period.
Okay, so I'm to understand then that at some point in the future, you'd be looking for us to affirmatively generally say we're, we're in favor. And then your timeline is approximately two months after that to try and formalize the option and the lease and?
Yes, sir, that is correct, and some of that obviously would be, we would be continuing to do due diligence during that period. And we would obviously be, be getting informed through the state of what they thought of our proposal. So, you know, as all parts of development, we would move from the letter of intent to the option. And at any point along, you know, the, the project could, could have an issue such that we decide to not move forward with it. But, but that would be, you know, if we didn't discover any issues, yes, sir, that timeline you mentioned would be correct.
I'm going to, I am going to give this some thought, but, you know, I, I sort of have a little difficulty with entering into a letter of intent without the town getting some sort of compensation.
Yeah, there, I, I didn't mention it, the letter of intent, again, it's pretty de minimis, but there is a, we, and again, this is open to discussion, but we, there is a, for the exclusivity period, there's a one-time payment that comes with a letter of intent, again, it's pretty de minimis, but.
When you, when you say de minimis, what is it?
On the order of a few thousands, sir.
Okay, well, a few thousands is, you know?
And, and again, I'm, I'm being a little vague in a public setting, but.
Understood, I, I know, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, any questions or comments from members of the public? Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, couple of questions for you. Do you know what your investment in the project will be? How much of your, what the total investment would be in the project? Using both properties?
Yes, sir, we do, it, it would be, actually be quite substantial due to the nature of the transmission. Again, I would, I appreciate the, the need to disclose as this is a, a public facility, but, but I'll be a little vague again because we haven't made our proposal to the state and still, we're still in a competitive situation. But just order of magnitude, this is, yeah, more than $50 million for, for the combined.
For both properties?
Yes, sir, and again, I'm being a little vague just due to where we are in the competitive situation.
Have, are you applying it this time to any other communities? Or is Len Lease, this the only community in the state you're applying to?
Yes, sir, we are evaluating others, we are looking at one other seriously, but we will likely, if, if we are moving forward with this, if, if the town is acceptable with us moving forward, we'd likely only move forward with this site.
Is the power, when you generate the power, is it going to be at market rates? Are you going to, or is there a program that you're above market rates when it's sold into the grid?
So the, the price at which we would propose to sell our power is obviously, typically, I'll just answer it generally, I won't speak about Len Lease, but typically, the, the combined price of the power and the renewable energy credits will be above market, and that, that's the intent of the renewable energy credits is to subsidize or to help renewable projects be, be competitive in the marketplace.
Do you have an idea of what the percentage would be, say, per kilowatt hour or megawatt hour above market rates? Because we had this program once before in town with another generator of power, and it was substantially greater than the market rates. So I was just wondering what the market, you know, ballpark? Could you must have some, I'm sure we can look it up then on the, the state must be offering, allowing you to do this at a certain rate then?
No, sir, it's a, it's a competitive auction, so they will, and, and you can, this is all public. The, the pricing that all the various proponents submit into the RFP is, I believe, it's 75% of the evaluation. So I can't tell you what the exact rate will be, no one will know. And, and I obviously am, it would be against my interest to just disclose the rate we're intending to propose.
Sure, through the chair to the mayor, has any other, any other company approached the town about setting up any type of solar project?
I believe there have been some in the past, but all of them were not, were not either capable of or interested in connecting to the grid. They all were connecting into the Wallingford distribution system, which is not permissible.
Well, what do you mean not permissible? That means, there's a difference between permissible and not that they don't want to do it, and we won't get into that discussion, but.
We're not going to jeopardize our franchise by violating the terms under which it exists, which, which means it has to be a, a distribution system that stands on its own. We do not have sales of electricity into our system that would go elsewhere. This has to be a merchant plant.
This plant has to be a merchant. This plant has to be a merchant plant.
Right. Merchant plants are okay, but the sale of electricity within our system would have to be sold to Wallingford Electric. And currently, if it's above market rates, we're really not interested, as that just increases the cost of electricity within the town.
I won't get off on LS Power then, what they do. But all right, because they generate power here, in Wallingford.
LS Power generates here, but it's a merchant plant, and it sells out onto the grid. So it has its own, invested its money into the substation, et cetera, and they are sold into the outside grid where they become a market participant.
Is this the first RFP that the state has offered? Do you know that they've put out there for this type of generation, for electrical, made these deals? Is this the first time the state has offered this, or have you seen this happen before? Well, yeah, through your company, I guess, because the mayor wouldn't pay attention.
Connecticut has put out other RFPs, yes, sir. They did a quite recent one, probably about six months ago, for larger facilities, facilities larger than 20 megawatts for solar. And they've done some in the years past. I couldn't quote you all of them off the top of my head. How long they've had an initiative specifically to look at landfills, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, sir.
So you said the state's offering no finance, you're not getting anything from the state or anything? That's fine.
That is correct, sir.
So, question then, this would be through, the best person I think to answer this would be Mr. Bose. If they build the plant, say it's a $50 million between the two properties, because of the nature of solar, the panels do wear, they don't wear out, but they don't produce. Over time, they become less efficient. And so they produce less over time. How does the taxes work? Would the taxes be more, would they be higher, because the product, the cost, the value that they produce is greater in the beginning than it will be at the end? Is this a diminishing tax amount, or will it stay constant, or will you be negotiating something of that nature, because of the nature of it, such?
Some solar operations and infrastructure assets are exempt from taxation, so I don't really know without getting a clearer picture of what's being proposed. So there may be no tax from a personal property or business property aspect. We have to check on that. If it is, of course, these assets are, I think you're correct, they depreciate relatively rapidly. So there would be a decent-sized diminishing return, a return each year after that, unless, of course, they reinvest in new panels, et cetera, et cetera. The lease, I should say, the land improvements, that's all subject to the vagaries of property assessment and establishment of value through income methods and things of that nature. So, again, that's probably, just sitting here now thinking, I don't want to say that the panels are exempt, without looking at the whole project with our assessor, I could not tell you right now. But there would be an increase in the value of the land and the property, the real property.
I mean, anything to the landfill has to be an improvement, I mean, color-wise, I mean...
One would hope.
I mean, you're sitting, I mean, it's, there's areas of that area that are radioactive, I mean, so it's, and I'm not being funny, there are radioactive cells in the landfill. So, I mean, it's, that are boxed off. So, I mean, that's an area that they won't, I'm sure, be touching. But, so, I mean, how much can you really add to the value of the property? I was just, I mean, there was a question during the open forum that the public asked about the electric division, our own electric division, getting involved in some type of solar generation. I don't think the person in public had any knowledge that this was on the agenda for tonight. I think they would have been a little more robust in their questioning. Why doesn't the electric division, and I wish the electric division was here, they get involved in all these other projects? Hopefully, the council will look, 5 and 50, diesel projects, et cetera, other additional generation projects through the council. Why doesn't the electric division, through the, to the mayor, even partake in a project of this nature, or at least partner up with somebody?
I think Mr. Adair answered it quite capably in the open session, and thus far, these projects are not competitive when it comes to the market rates. So they are being subsidized. They're subsidized because the purchasers of the power must pay a higher amount in order to meet guidelines set by the state, by DEEP, et cetera. But they, it's well outside of the market rate at this point, and the electric division is not interested in increasing our power costs in order to be involved in one of these projects.
Maybe I don't understand. You just said that we can't sell this power to Wallingford. This power's going out into the grid. So if this power's going on the grid in a merchant way, you're selling it to UI or Eversource, whoever you're selling it to, you're selling it at a profit. They're not here to lose money, they're here to make money. If we are partnering with them, how, and they were making money, and we were making a percentage of that money, or we, or Wallingford was doing it and making the money, wouldn't that, if they were making a profit, wouldn't that lower the rates eventually in the town? That wouldn't be selling it back to Wallingford. You just said that. So I'm at a total loss there, why Wallingford wouldn't invest in something of this nature. It's our...
We cannot be selling power outside of our franchise area. Otherwise, others could sell their power within our franchise area. So for us to partner with someone who's selling power outside of the franchise area as a business proposition and hope that we're going to make money on it at some point in the future, our belief is that that would violate the terms of our franchise.
Then, I'll just leave you on this then. Then what does the electric division do when they get involved in the 5 and 50, or these portable generators, these diesel generators that sit in Ledger or sit up in Manchester, or sit in other communities that produce peak power that's sold into the grid, when they're on demand, that they sell that power at that particular time? That's not for Wallingford's generation, they're selling it at a profit. What would be the difference, Mr. Mayor? And this would be the point, that this is another way that Wallingford could produce and save money on our electric rates and have more money for the citizens of Wallingford. This is something that has come up before, and I would just hope that the council, because it's not, the mayor is definitely not going to look at this with open eyes, that the council would look at this and say, hey, this is an opportunity for Wallingford Electric, it's an opportunity for the citizens of Wallingford to have lower electric rates. And I just hope they would do something about that. I mean, totally for solar, there's no cra, no, not. But really, we're just letting an opportunity go right by us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Ms. Brashears.
It's Candace Brashears, 90 North Airline Road. Just have one question. Is the landfill considered part of the percentage of open space in Wallingford? And is there an impact or whatever on building something like this on open space area?
Mayor, Attorney Farrell.
I don't know how the state defines open space. I think you can look at open space in many ways. I would, I would consider it certainly not typical open space. When you have the structures, it obviously prevents the normal interaction between the environment and the ground from occurring.
I just didn't know. I know some, some areas, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking, some towns count all parks and hiking trails and their landfills as part of their open space requirements. And I didn't know if this happened to fall into that or not.
I don't believe that Wallingford has counted that as part of the open space, given the nature of it with the capping and the various cells there. But it wouldn't have an enormous impact on our total open space because of the relative smallness of the area. But I can't be certain the answer, that'd have to be researched, I think.
All right, thanks. And I do approve, by the way.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Any other questions or comments from the public? Mr. Gross.
Just one last question, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I would hope that the council, just because the mayor says something, doesn't always mean it's true. Just because I say something, it's not always true. So I just hope that the council would talk to somebody besides George Adair or Mayor Dickinson, and get the full lowdown on something of this type of project, see what the benefits could be for the community, act swiftly, because these are types of projects the town should grasp onto. But at least, do your due diligence, and let's just not go on with the mayor and say, oh, we're going to get some tax dollars. Because these are diminishing returns, as Mr. Bose says, these panels might not be taxable, we don't know. So do your full diligence, I hope you do your full diligence before you assign anything. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
I'm Corrigan, Mountain View Road. I believe you mentioned the max capacity defined as full solar generation plus battery discharge. At this latitude, and given the charge, the charge and discharge cycles of batteries, how much time can we expect to have full discharge?
Yes, sir. I won't discuss our proposal specifically, I'll discuss what they had requested in the RFP. The RFP requests a four-hour minimum discharge.
And I would highlight to say, that's, we're not obligated to actually propose that, that's just what they're requesting.
Mr. Gross. Anyone else besides Mr. Gross?
The only reason I'm asking the question is, to Lynn Lee's, do you partner with any of these plans, or is this an option even for the council to partake in, that if it is beneficial to the town, if they do their diligence, that a partner would be beneficial to you financially and/or otherwise, because they have the ability to pay?
We're always, I mean, we're a business, so we are always open to things, the specifics of that, we would obviously need to check into it. It does complicate. We generally, I mean, we don't seek financing, as we're a large company, we don't seek financing until much, much later into the project.
I understand you have the money, but this is a partner that has the ability to come in as a partner, not as a, you know. So that's, but you do have, you would not welcome, but if push came to shove, and somebody wants, you want to do this deal, and there's a partnership available...
As I said, sir, yes, we're a business. I mean, if it's an attractive enough offer.
Again, for the council's benefit.
Mr. Pitney, thank you for your presentation, thank you for your patience.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I very much appreciate your time this evening. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question procedurally. I know one of the intents for Mr. Pitney was to leave here today, possibly with action, although we can't do that, but is there anything that we can motion today for a future meeting? There's nothing that we could say we'd like to put this on the agenda for X meeting?
I suspect it'll come before the council again, but I don't think there's any, because of our agenda, there's not any action we can take tonight. Mayor?
I think we were pretty clear with Mr. Pitney. It would be introductory here. There are a lot of unknowns. We need to see a copy of one of these intent letters, what they look like. Law Department will get involved, and, you know, we may have something for the next meeting, we may not. But we'll certainly make every effort to work within the time schedule as indicated, and try to move things forward.
If I may, with another question then, do you have enough to take a next step? So in other words, you outlined earlier, you needed a few things to walk away with in order to take another step. Have you been able to get enough today to do that?
Yes, sir, thank you. We have, as the mayor mentioned, this was really just an informative session. I believe we have, through working through the town offices, the information we need, as the mayor mentioned, what we, what we're working through with the town legal, is that the, what that letter of intent will look like. And then we, our intent is to come back to you at the next, this next meeting, to ask for your approval for signature on that letter, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make sure that if he needed more from us, that we could give it to him, because, again, I would like to not see this get stalled out. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, as well, for chiming in. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Pitney.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I just want to say again, for the benefit of those in the crowd, the item with respect to the appointment to the Historic Properties Commission for a five-year term, that has been withdrawn for the, from the agenda tonight. So that will not be discussed by the council. Onto item seven. Item seven is discussion and possible action with respect to the removal of the affordable housing restriction imposed on the council, by the council on Simpson Village. Mr. LaRosa, Mr. Martorelli, if you'd like to come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the removal of the affordable housing restriction imposed by the council on Simpson Village.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Good evening. We do have a letter, but for the benefit, first of all, for the benefit of the record, if you could introduce all of yourselves, that would be terrific.
Yes, for the record, my name is Janar Martorelli, representing Bob LaRosa, who heads up the development company Simpson Village, and his left is...
I'm Karen Shearest, 16 Bonning Court in Wallingford, and I've represented Simpson Village in the sale.
And, Mr. LaRosa, if you could.
Bob LaRosa from Simpson Development of 163 Research Parkway, Meriden.
Thank you. And once again, for the benefit of the public, if you could explain to us what brings you back before the council at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a two- or three-minute overview of the project. In 2005, Simpson Development negotiated to purchase the old Simpson School from the city council. It was during a very robust market, prices were rising, and it was really a seller's market. At the RFP, the Simpson requested to construct 30 units, provided a site plan. They were somewhat boxy in appearance. The council approved the request with the proviso that the units be age-restricted, and that 30% of the units be designated as affordable. And that about halfway through the project, that the affordable units be constructed. As the project went to the design stage, the units became much more architecturally pleasing, and as a result, the density was reduced from 30 units, which was originally contemplated, to 25 units. The market rate units had an average, well, where the initial asking price was $300,000, and those units began to sell very well in the range of $300 to $380,000. The council was kind enough in 2011 to allow Mr. LaRosa to construct the affordable at the end of the project, instead of delaying what was a project that had some momentum. It turned out to be a, you know, much appreciated decision on Mr. LaRosa's part, because the rest of the project, the rest of the market rate units went very well through completion. There were 18 units in total built. Five have been resold at a profit for all the people who originally purchased. About a year and a half ago, a developer put the affordable units on the market. About a year ago, these units were framed, there's seven of them. The asking price is $250,000. One has been sold, and, you know, according to Karen, there's been plenty of interest, but the maximum income requirement has been a major impediment to the actual sales of the units. The Condominium Association, which is completely controlled by the unit owners, and has been for, you know, well over a year now, they certainly are... they certainly are in favor of the age restriction, but are opposed to the affordability requirement, which is preventing the sales and preventing the completion of the project, and therefore preventing the, you know, collection of condo fees on the remaining units. So the council has been supportive over the years. Market conditions changed dramatically. Soon after the developer closed on the project in 2007. And today, I mean, there are, you know, plenty of properties on the market in the range that the state would consider affordable, as well are these. There is no state statutory requirements that these units be affordable. There's no requirement as part of your zoning regulations that these be affordable. And the waiver on your part won't change what's actually built, because the units are already framed and the landscaping is done. It's just a matter of finishing out the interior of the units. Thank you very much.
Can you give us some specific examples of, of failed sales as a result of the affordable restriction on the housing?
Yeah, so I work for Calcani, and we've represented the project from the beginning. When we first opened the affordable, there were an incredible amount of inquiries, and people loved what they looked like, wanted to move in. And then I said, well, you know, there is an affordable component, and none of them qualified. I mean, the first buyer happened to qualify. The person that they came in with didn't qualify for like $25. And, you know, we couldn't make an exception.
When you say $25, is that monthly?
No, it's yearly. It's a yearly income requirement.
Okay.
It's not an asset-based, it's an income-based.
And, and so you made, you said there was one example where somebody was overqualified by $25. Are, are there other examples of failed sales?
I've had realtors send me emails saying, you know, what is the deal with this affordability? Where if someone was making what they say they need to make, how could they get a mortgage to cover, you know, the expense of it? I mean, they would have to be putting down an enormous amount of money. And everyone retires differently. Everyone who, you know, is 55 and older. And it is the only active 55 and older right now in Wallingford. So people cannot move into their own town in that development because of the restriction on income.
Would you like to speak, Mr. LaRosa?
Yeah. Some of the, one of the stories that Karen relayed to me was a brother and sister that came in that wanted to purchase a unit for their mother, who definitely qualified as far as income went, but not as far as being able to purchase the unit. But the way we had to look at them was the people that were going to purchase the unit, which was the brother and sister for the mother, they were overqualified in terms of income. So we weren't able to sell the unit to them. And it's hard to really judge how many people have walked away from the units because of overqualification, because there's been a lot of instances where people have come, especially for open houses. And when Karen sat down, or their realtor sat down with them and went over the restrictions, they were overqualified, so they didn't even bother coming back again. That's the dilemma that we've had for over, we've actually been marketing the units for about 18 months. And that's what we keep running across time and time again. The other thing I'd like to note also is the maximum sales price by formula today is $296,000. We're actually priced at $250,000. So we're well below the income limits. We're well below the maximum sales price that we could generate on the property. And we purposely stayed at a lower rate to encourage, encourage more people that would be able to come in and purchase the units. But unfortunately, it just hasn't worked for us.
And if the affordable requirement is lifted, other than marketing it as a, an unrestricted unit, is it, is that going to change how you market or price the unit?
No, the price will stay exactly where it is. We feel that that's a fair market price for the property. It's really, the income, as Karen alluded to, there's various income levels. There's various way people retire. We had one person that came in that would qualify in terms of her income by her pension alone. But as soon as she elected to take her social security payments, she then became overqualified. And most of the people that have come out here have been Wallingford residents that have wanted to purchase and haven't been able to because of the, you know, they still want to purchase, they want to downsize, they want to go into a unit that's this size. They love the location, they love the units themselves, but they don't qualify to come into the complex.
Okay. So I will open it up to questions from councilors. I know Councilor Zandry, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilor Fishbein has questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. When did you originally acquire this property from the town?
The closing, I think, was in 2007.
And at that time, there was the affordable component. And, you know, I wasn't on the council then, so I had nothing to do with that. You made the business choice not to build the affordable units at, at that time?
It was, the decision was sort of made for, for us in 2008, when the banking crisis hit. There was a, for some reason, we couldn't find any banks that would finance the mortgage for any prospective buyers because of the affordable restriction. It wasn't until 2012, I think, that banks started either figuring out or loosening how they looked at the marketplace. And then we found several banks that would finance the units. And just to put it in perspective with a timeline, that's actually when we came back to the council and said, by contract, we're supposed to be building the affordable units as soon as we had 50% of the units, the market rate units sold. We came back and asked for relief of that, and, you know, with the understanding that we would build the affordable units as soon as we could find financing for it. And that's exactly what we did.
So my concern, and I, I thank the chair for asking the question, is the ultimate profit to the developer, understanding that when, when you left this room in 2007, you understood a restriction. You understood, the council, based upon its requirement, its request, set a price. Because certainly, when, when you left the room, the price would probably have been higher without the restrictions. So, you know, I'm concerned about now, without this restriction, the price increasing. So, you know, I would generally be in favor of this with the proviso that the, we've represented here tonight, that the $257 is the price?
$250,000 is the base price. There are listed options that prospective buyers could buy. And that would be the only reason that we would raise the price if they.
So, so my concern was that, you know, I would be in favor so long as the base price doesn't raise. You know, I think that's fair, because otherwise, I'm, I'm going to be looking for some money for the town.
I'm in agreement with leaving the price exactly as it is.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time, I, I would like to make that amendment to what's on the floor.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor Lavin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming for us. Thanks for your effort in trying to sell the affordable houses. I love capitalism, a free market. So I think at this point, after a fair shake, I'm comfortable with releasing that and letting you guys sell these houses to people probably that are interested and just, just didn't make it because they make too much money or have too much money, whatever it is. So that's it, just simple. Thanks.
Councilor Sullivan.
I'll start by saying I'm not in favor of this. I wasn't in favor of it when you came before us, and you wanted to change the lease and put off building the affordable housing. I think a contract's a contract. I think you walked into this knowing that 30% of these properties need to be affordable. I know you do great work, Mr. LaRosa. I've seen it, I've walked back there. The condominiums are just outstanding. You did a great job on a nice piece of property. But I can't support this. My concern is, what have I got to bind you to $250,000? And then I have to question, how were these properties marketed? Maybe you didn't really put a lot of effort into marketing this, and over a period of time, the plan was to come back here. I don't know. But that's one of my concerns.
I can appreciate that thought. I also appreciate capitalism. I was most anxious to sell these units the minute that we put them up. We did market them aggressively. We had many open houses. Karen can attest to what she's done in terms of marketing. In terms of, we're, right now, we're $46,000 below what the affordable formula dictates that those properties could sell for as a maximum price. And we're still not getting any movement with them. The, I, I don't know what kind of proviso we could put in, in the agreement, but I'd be happy to have a restriction in there that if we market them, if we sell them for more than $250,000, outside of options that people want to purchase and put in there. I don't want to restrict people from being able to put up hardwood flooring or, or anything else in there. It's not as a standard listed price that's there. I'd be work, happy to work something out with the town where we split that, extra money with the town. And you can put it towards other affordable projects.
I can appreciate that, but you've been before us three times, and you've looked for deals three times, and I, I just can't support it. I would like to ask the young lady, what type of marketing she did and what level it was done?
Well, I can tell you that we are on all of the internet partners. So we're on Zillow and Realtor.com and all of that. And they are having enhanced views. On Zillow, last month alone, we had over 2,000 views. We had 44 hits, which meant that 44 people actually delved into the site. Of those 44 hits, we got no calls, because it says that they're affordable, that there's an affordable component. So when people see that, you know, it generally means that the income is very low, and they won't qualify. When people have called, I've told them what the income is, and they say, okay, well, thanks, bye. You know, how come it's like that? How come you can't even get a mortgage at that income? That's what the formula says.
You marketed it on Zillow and Trulia, I'm sure it's on?
Yep.
And through some of your colleagues at other real estate firms?
Absolutely, it's on MLS, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, and have you marketed it outside of the state?
No. I mean, other than Realtor.com is outside of the state. All of the internet partners, you know, are from anywhere. We have had inquiries from New York. We've had an inquiry from New Jersey. You know, but they're inquiries because of the, the income restriction.
And what's the income restriction as far as dollar-wise for?
$68,000.
$68,000? You couldn't find anybody?
No. They, you know, when they retire, people, the income they're taking with their retirement from their social security or their pensions are more than that for the two people. It's not a one income, it's two people coming in generally.
Right.
And it's more, they make more. They don't make significantly more. They make usually less than the $85,000 median income. But they make more than what the formula says.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you answering questions. And you know I'm against this, and I, I appreciate that more than you could sit there and answer my questions. But for the reasons I stated earlier, you knew going in 30% was to be affordable. And I would just encourage you to maintain the deal that you initially made. Thank you.
Councilor Testa.
Thank you. Good evening. I was on the council when we originally sold the property. So a couple of things need to be understood. And this may impact how we deal with this going forward. Normally, when, when there is an affordable component, affordable housing component to a project, it's in order to meet open space requirements, or it's in order to meet state requirements, or whatever it might be, there are actual, there's teeth behind it, okay? That's not the case here. The, the, the only reason there is, we're using the state, that what the generally accepted state formula for what constitutes an affordable property is because there was no other formula to come to use. We needed one. So we said, hey, why don't we use what the state uses? Like what planning and zoning might impose if somebody came in and said, I want to make a, I want to, like, planning and zoning sometimes use this, because someone said, I want to, I want to increase the density, so I'm going to, I'm going to build what's referred to as, you know, an open space development. And then someone said, we're going to also have an affordable housing component to it. But we just didn't have any other way to define what would make a unit affordable. We said, if we're going to sell this property for a pretty low price, we could have put any conditions we wanted on it. And we didn't get a lot of money for it, but we said, let's get it developed. So we said, you know what? Let's, let's make it a, an over 55 property. And because it's, you know, it's desirable right now, let's put a, a requirement for some of, that some of these units be considered affordable. And again, the, sometimes the state requirement would kick in. We talked about this a little bit. If you look at the, the overall affordable housing stock in the town, as far as all of the homes in the town, then that really didn't kick in. So we said, all right, what makes it affordable? And we decided to use that formula, okay? So I say that because we could change that formula. Remember that. We can decide tonight or later, we can come up with a different definition of what would make these things affordable, okay? We, because it's, it's really a concept that we thought about. We can, we can redefine what's affordable, as opposed to just dropping it altogether. So keep that in your mind as we go forward. I'm pretty familiar with how it works, because, I mean, I was in the mortgage business for a long time. And in fact, when Verna first put in that Sycamore in, you know, the area next to the Oakdale, I worked, I helped them come up with their sales prices, because I understood the formula, and we played around with it a lot. So I'm a little confused as to how somebody can't qualify, or how you couldn't sell it. Because my understanding is, you start with an income level. And I forget what it is. Is it 70% of the median income, 70? It's 80. So that's where we got 68? And then from there, you backtrack. You, you work back from that to come up with a sales price.
Correct.
Now, the formula, as I understood it, would, would, took into account a debt ratio which was very conservative. So I can't understand how somebody could not qualify for a mortgage.
Because it also takes into consideration the interest rates. So the price of the house.
I know, yeah, go ahead.
So the price of the house, you want to go?
Yeah, please.
I do. It's not that people can't qualify. It's that all of our buyers that have been coming, the only people who have been interested in purchasing the units, make more than $68,000 per year.
Okay.
That's our problem.
Okay.
It's not, it's not.
So by, all right, I got you. So, and so the, I think our primary interest was that the sales price would be affordable, would meet a qualification that we consider affordable.
Which we meet.
Right, so by using, and so by using that formula, again, if this, somebody doesn't qualify to be able to buy it if they make more money than that median income.
Correct.
So, for example, if we just said, drop the income requirement, but make sure the sales price is based upon it, work with me here, then we've met the spirit of what we were trying to achieve by making X number of units affordable by sales price. And if you can't find people, I, I also don't understand how someone, you can't find someone that makes less than $68,000 and wants to buy these things.
We found one.
Yeah. But then somebody made a comment that they, then they can't get the mortgage. And I'm a little.
That was other Realtors who had...
Because I'm a little confused by that. Because I'm having a hard, I'm also having a hard time figuring out how you get to almost $300,000 from that $68,000 income level.
It's a formula.
Yeah, I know.
And we, the numbers get plugged in, are the property tax, and the housing association fee, and the utilities.
Okay.
It's plugged in, and then they're able to...
Hold on.
Interest rates.
Yeah. You take the current interest rate, and you're able to make 30%. They can spend up to 30% to put a roof over their head. And that's how, whether it's affordable or not, most banks work on that type of setup.
Yeah, and I understand. They say, okay, and these are made up numbers. $68,000 makes $5,000 a month, $5,200 a month, whatever it is. And your housing expense cannot exceed 1,800, because it's 30% or whatever it is. And then you take into all the, factor all the other stuff in there. And by, if somebody qualified based on their income, they'd have no problem qualifying for the mortgage, because the mortgage is gonna let them go to 40, 45. If anything, these numbers should be lower, because the interest rates are so much lower than they were back then. And the, and the median income has not gone up $20,000 in 10 years. So I'm also suspecting that part of the problem very well may be the, the extra, the other expenses. I've had somebody bring up, at some point, the issue of the condo fees. I've had, I've heard of existing property owners being upset because they thought that the condo fees potentially would need to be lower for the affordable units, and that that's not fair for everyone else. Is the, is there an issue regarding either the sales price or the condo, or potentially lowered condo fees for any of the existing property owners?
As Attorney Martorelli stated earlier, the association has been self-governant for over a year.
Right.
It's actually been almost two years. They set the condo fees for the entire complex. And they, they based it on expenses that they have. They based it on the size of the units. And they came up with a formula, and they, they actually raised the condo fees substantially from where they were set originally. So the current fees reflect what the current association owners have decided to assess on it. And with that in mind, they, we took those current fees into account when I said that the maximum sales price by formula is $296,000. That's based on the current association fees that are in place right now. But in terms of people not being able to get a mortgage, I'm not sure if Karen had said that or not, but that hasn't been the issue of people not being able to get the mortgage. The problem is people making too much money to qualify to be able to live there.
Okay.
Sales price doesn't change. We've already stated that we'd be willing to leave our sales price right where it is.
Right.
Falls into the, well below what's affordable.
Okay. So, so we're not having a problem with financing. Okay. And just a couple of points, too. I've been pretty agreeable with everything you've wanted to do over the years. One thing I was very upset about was the fact that we never, you weren't able to use, utilize the existing school building that was on, that was on the front, that fronted Route 150. I know at one point, that was a big part of our agreement to let you have the property at the price it was, because we wanted that building used, because it looked great, and we wanted that history of Wallingford to be there. And for whatever reason, you weren't able to use that building, and we let that go.
I would like to at least state that it was not taken lightly.
Yeah.
And we used a local architecture firm that, Steve Lazarus, as you probably know, is very in favor of adaptive reuse of buildings. And their firm concluded that the building was not feasible to be reused.
So we let that go. That's all right.
Thank you.
And I also was totally sympathetic to the problem you had with the financing in 2009, '08, '09, '11.
'10.
I totally understood. And it made sense to me, because, I mean, FHA, they were just, they were having a real problem with the deed restrictions you were putting on to make, so they would continue to be affordable. So I understood then. So the fact that you had to put off building them, because there was no way anybody could get financing and it had nothing to do with you, was understandable. So here we are today, and I understand the issue you're having today. So I would only say to my colleagues, and to you, I'm hoping you're thinking about what I've been saying, go back to the spirit of what we wanted. There's no law that requires these to be affordable. There's no law. We only used the only formula that was available. So our, and I think my colleagues then would agree, the spirit was just, let's keep a certain percentage of them affordable for those people nearing retirement that want to stay in town and can't afford market pricing. So, and you kind of have said, gee, I'll keep the price where it is now. I just don't want us to agree to remove the term affordable from our agreement. We can redefine it. Again, we can redefine it. We can say, let's continue to use this formula that determines something, but if it turns out that, you know, the people that are coming in that can afford these are making a little more, maybe we can adjust the income level a little bit. Keeping in mind, we still want to try to make them available to someone that's in that lower median, in the lower income level. Does that make any sense? Can you see where I'm going with this?
It does. And I think the example I gave where...
Well, this is important. We could choose yes or no.
A son and daughter came in that were looking at purchasing a unit for their mother, who didn't qualify at almost any income level to afford the unit. But in order for them to purchase it, they would need to take a mortgage. And we had to take their income levels in consideration. So they're, they made substantially more than $68,000. They weren't able to go through with the sale. You know, affordable units, we actually build, my company, the major book of business that we work on is CHFA and HUD projects. We build a lot of affordable housing, not as developers, strictly as constructors. So I'm very familiar with the terms of affordable housing, what it looks like, what they are. Most of them are apartments. We haven't built any in Wallingford, but we've built all over Connecticut. And the idea of having homeownership at 55 and older and still being affordable, although it sounds good on paper, isn't what the current population wants. The people that have bought our units, most of them have sold larger units, larger houses, and decided to downsize and come and live in the simplicity of a complex like ours is. So the 55 and older has worked out very well. It's strictly been the, for whatever reason, people who qualify in that narrow window of being able to afford the unit and not make too much money has restricted our marketplace so much that in 18 months of active marketing, we've only been able to sell one unit. And the footprint is set. I mean, the, we're not changing how anything is done there. The exterior of the building is all done. We've actually completed one unit as a model. And the other five units are just shelled. And part of the reason we did that was, we had discussions not only with the council, and you agreed to allow us to build the backup before we built the front until we could work out our financing issues. But it was also an agreement I made with the people that were buying the unit. We said, look, we're gonna finish these, all intents and purposes, you're gonna look at finished units. But it creates a hardship for the association at this point also, because our obligation to pay condo fees is limited to only the units that are declared or that are finished. And we made an agreement with them to subsidize their association fees to a point where they're not gonna lose money. But it's a lot less than what they would be making if we sold the units, and they were collecting the full fees. So it's a bit of a burden on them also, and that's why, we didn't mention this, but we have the full support of the association to eliminate this clause from the, to eliminate this restriction in its entirety.
Counselor Testa, I'd like you to take into consideration, as well as the rest of the council, that, that we're often faced with changing environments. And, you know, as humans, we have to adapt to the circumstances and the changes in the environment. And there was a time in the state of Connecticut, in the town of Wallingford, where the affordability requirement, that was mostly tied to the, to the state statute, 830G, was very helpful for the people on their, on their way into the units. You know, they're being able to purchase units that they were otherwise shut out of the market. And Karen, you could probably talk more intelligently than me on this, but it hasn't turned out to their benefit for the people who've purchased these units. In 2005, when this agreement was negotiating, the housing market was robust. It was easy to sell houses, and prices were rising. Very difficult to sell houses in the current market. And in Wallingford, Connecticut, prices of houses are still below where they were at the height of the market. And people who got into these affordable houses can't get out of them because of the restrictions. And anytime you have a restriction on housing, typically, it affects the market value of the houses. And today, I think it certainly is in, you know, Mr. LaRosa's interest to have the restriction removed. It's certainly in the association's interest to have a viable association, and not one where, at the tail end of it, the units are empty. It's also in the town of Wallingford's best interest to put these, to increase your tax base, to have these units finished, to put them on the, on the market. They're built, you know, they're smaller than the, than the market rate units that were built in the back, but they're still very nice units. And I think the, the town benefits from having a successful project, and future owners benefit from not having to deal with the restrictions. The irony of the restrictions are that it costs an additional $1,000 for somebody to sell their affordable restricted unit than it does to sell a non-restricted unit, because there's an attorney involved with that process that has to certify. There's red tape involved. There's bureaucracy involved with that. And every time there's a prospective purchaser, it's, you know, the Chinese fire drill of, I shouldn't have said that, but anyway, of, of having to do the rigmarole of, can we sell the unit, or can we not sell the unit? And it's, it's not working for any of the vested parties today, including the taxpayers of the town of Wallingford, in our opinion. And so I'd like you to take the fact that the market has changed significantly since 2005 into consideration. And to take into consideration that the developer voluntarily reduced the density by almost 20%. So it's just the opposite of what you said earlier. In most cases, there's an incentive to have the affordable component by having increased density. In this particular case, there was a density reduction of almost 20%, not by requirement of the council or by requirement of the planning commission, just that the developer wanted to build a nicer unit, which required a bigger footprint, which required less units. So he's done everything in his ability to build a project that's far more aesthetically pleasing than the one that this council looked at and approved when the contract was drafted. So there have been adjustments on both sides. There have been concessions, not concessions, but both sides have worked together very well to get this project where it is today. And I, and I think it's a beautiful project. It's one that, you know, the council has a right to be proud in, and they take a big part in it. And that school building, it was a blight, and it was full of environmental hazards that Mr. LaRosa had to abate and never, you know, and of course, that's part of the deal. He looked at it, he bought it, he ended up with a few more environmental problems than he expected, but he took care of it. And he took care of the neighbors. And so we ask for your consideration for the fact that we've done our best, we've tried our best, the market's changed, and we're asking for you to help us to adapt to the changing circumstances that we face today. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm set. Thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, just a comment, and I'll be brief. You know, we could talk about the selling price and how it was marketed, and so on and so forth. And we could dispute all those facts, but the facts not in dispute are that these units are not in demand in the way that the deal was structured. So to me, that's a failure of both the builder and this body in how to structure the affordable housing. So for that fact, I see no reason to saddle the association with the increased fees of not having these other units for sale. So for that reason, I'm in support of the motion.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, folks. I just want to start off by saying, I wasn't on the council at the time that the property was sold, but I was sitting out there in those seats. And I, and I do recall when we marketed the property, and I believe it sold in around $100,000. And I remember the commentary that I made at the microphone at that time, and I thought Wallingford was making a mistake. We have this huge and prime piece of property on the edge of the road, right on Center Street. And I thought that $100,000 was a song. And there was a lot of discussion around, the old school have to be taken down, asbestos abatement, so on and so forth. But I think if we had gone out to bid, and if we had spent even $100,000 or $200,000 of our own money, instead of getting $100,000 and walking away, we might have invested some, and maybe gotten a million dollars over there. You sold 18 units at full price, was that correct? I just want to make sure that I have my numbers straight here. If, if the issue is that they're not qualifying because of the amount of money they make, what would happen if you lowered the price of the units? Does that affect it at all?
You know, it still would keep the income the same. The income requirement would still be the same. So whether the price is lower or higher, the income requirement is established by that formula.
Well, yes, that's true. I don't disagree that. What I think happens, though, is more people that are, they're making, I think people that make $50,000 look at that and go, I can never afford that. And your price per square foot for this is $229.00. These are for the affordable units. Your large units at the other end that sold for $350,000, they're at $234,000. It's effectively the same. It's, it's not really affordable the way that I'm looking at. The median listing in Wallingford is $254,000, and the average price per square foot's $152,000. I could almost make the argument that those, those remaining five homes are overpriced, and you guys are, I don't want to suggest you're creating a problem intentionally, but the house price may be too high. If the, if the condominium that's being sold was offered for less, you might have more people of more marginal sale, earning capability coming forward. I think some people come forward, and they look at this, and they go, you know what? And I, and you'll have to excuse me, because I don't have the HOA fees here. But from the rest of the stuff that I looked at here, I mean, it's, it's a pretty heavy, it's a $913 estimated principal and interest, $417 property tax, 81 home insurance. And like I said, I don't have the HOA fees. It's $1,500. And somebody making 68, or like you said, a couple of people missed by $1,000 or whatever, or 69, that's pretty tight for some people. If the, if the unit prices were dropped, has that been tried? I looked back as far as I could see on Realtor.com, and it looks like these prices have been pretty static in a soft market.
My only comment on that is that the maximum sales price by formula, as for somebody making $68,000, the maximum sales price would be $296,000. We have a large buffer in there for someone who makes less than $68,000, substantially less, that would still be able to afford $250,000.
Okay. So you're basically explaining how someone could afford the mortgage. I, I, when I go to the bank, when I went to refinance my mortgage, they told me I could buy a $750,000 house for the amount of money that I earn. I don't want a mortgage that large, and I don't think other people do. Just because the bank is willing to give you the kind of money, saying that your income requirements meet it, and if you want to really look at the fancy number at 42%, you could buy, don't, don't buy the house you can afford. Buy the house you want. I'm, I think that's why we've got a housing crisis to start with. So many people bought houses they couldn't afford. I, so the question I asked was, have we dropped the price below $250,000 to try to entice people at a lower income level?
It has not been...
Our experience, Counselor Zandry, on this particular project, is that, I can't say to a... say to a person, but almost to a person, if not to a person, the amount of the principal being borrowed has been very, very minimal, if anything at all. In most cases, people are selling a house, taking the proceeds, and purchasing these houses. It's not like the, it's not a starter house, where you would typically have a young family, you know, mortgaging away their entire income because they have no alternative. The market here is not that first-time home buyer. It's really, it's really been the trade-down home buyer, the trade-sideways home buyer. So that really hasn't been the issue. But to address your question specifically, there has not been a reduction in the price since it was listed. And in comparison to the cost of new construction, you know, the prices were designed, the project was designed to be sold at a price that met the qualifications of the definition that we had originally agreed to, and that's what was built. And we said, okay, you know, so we somewhat kind of arbitrarily picked a number and designed the building around that number, with amenities such as garages and things of that nature. This could have been designed to be at a lower price, but then it would not have been compatible with the market rate units to the rear of the property. So there's a balancing act of, you know, again, living within the requirements of the contract, and yet meeting the obligations, not legal obligations, but moral obligations to the people who had already purchased within the development. And I think that's the way everything was structured.
Well, I have an obligation to the taxpayers who let that property walk at $100,000. That's the way I'm looking at it here today. You came forward with an original plan, then you asked it to be amended, which it's been. I think the council, the prior councils, because I never voted on this, were as amenable to that as it is, and it sounds like you've got some support up here tonight. I'm not one of those people. I'm sorry. I'm all for people getting the value out of what they purchased, but I mean, you also came here with a contract and with a plan to do what should be done over there, for the song of a price that you got that property for. And I really feel like we should, you should hold up your end of the bargain and find ways to sell those last five units. And I don't care if we use some of the creative math that Vinnie discussed, if it's the, I mean, you made the example that people are selling their houses, they're downsizing, and they're walking with cash. I know plenty of people that are also reverse-mortgaging their houses, and trying to stay where they are, they're trying to stay in town, and those things may be impacting them as well. I think that there are more creative ways to find, to sell five houses within the requirements of the original agreement than to just come up here and say, hey, you know, we'd like to be relieved of it. Because I really feel what happens is, we relieve that up here today, and people are going to come in into the, in what used to be the affordable housing units, they can order all the extras they want because it's not there, and they have a smaller house, less to clean, less to heat, and if they want to have, you know, chandeliers and Formica countertops, they can do it because they are now outside of $68,000. Again, when I look at what the median, median listed home price is and the average square foot cost, you guys exceed that by over 30%. And that may be because of the way it's built, the way it's set up, but given those parameters, I can't support removing the structure to make that inflate even more over there. And I don't begrudge the deal that you've made with the town with the sale price. That was worked out. That was hammered out. I didn't agree with it at the time, but once it was a done deal, it was a done deal, and I figured over the years, we'd see that back. But I can't support coming back again and saying, hey, you know, we're just stuck here. Because what do we do the next group? The next group that builds open space development somewhere else puts in a component like this, and they also run into a problem. Do we excuse them as well? Because if we set the trend, that's what we do here today. I would rather come up with another solution. You've waited on these last five units, X number of years, it looks like the listing here has been here for 230 days. What's another 60 or 90 to come up with another solution other than this? I won't belabor the point any further. I appreciate you answering my questions. I hope that wasn't too combative. I didn't mean it to be. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Certainly. So in the discussion, I've heard, I've heard Counselor Fishbein express an interest in somehow limiting the price if we lift the restriction. I've also heard Counselor Testa, who was here when the property was sold to the developer, say that if we're going to make a change for the developer, that we remember the spirit of what they sought to accomplish when this property was sold. And it seems to me that the developer is willing to stay within a price range that meets the calculation of affordability. And so if we continue to impose that restriction while lifting the income restriction, that we might satisfy Counselor Testa's interest in maintaining the spirit of the agreement. So I offer that up for consideration, for a possible amendment to Counselor Laffin's motion, and I see Counselor Fishbein's hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I guess there's two ways to go on this. Well, there's a few ways to go. But, you know, obviously, I want the properties to be on the rolls, and I'm disappointed that they're shells. That's of concern to me also. I guess what you could do is you could raise, you know, get out of the 80% situation, and make the requirement, let's say, 90% of the median income, see what happens in six months from now, you know, deal with it at that point. You know, that's another way of dealing with this. You know, as stated before, I wasn't up here. But I think that if we freeze the price in effect, or at least the base price, and we lift the income restriction, that we would not be meeting the spirit of what was intended originally, because I think the spirit, as expressed by Counselor Testa, was to allow for housing for individuals that were of a lower income, just generally. So if you lift the requirement, but you freeze the price, then people of higher income would be able to qualify, and I don't think that that meets the spirit. That being said, I make a motion to amend, the motion that's on the floor, to require that no unit be sold at a base price higher than $250,000.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Testa.
You know, the problem with that, would that only be one time, like today? Because again, everything's, everything's fluid based on income up to this point. I think, I think the more, I think the problem we have here is the fact that we put two requirements on there. One, that it be 55 and older, and one, that they're being affordable. And we've found that those things don't work together. That's the problem we're having. If you said there was, if this was not a 55 and older, these would be affordable units for young adults, which is this, again, another thing that has to do with affordability, young families. But we've made this a 55 and older. Now we're finding that that's not apparently compatible with the affordability component. Having those two components might have been what really, you know, messed this thing up in the first place. The problem with changing things is, and I, my own suggestion, of potentially keeping the sales price formula in place is that that opens up the door to a speculator coming in and buying it at a lower price, and then just selling it at market value price and making a fortune on it. I mean, I'm saying, we made you do that. We could open up the door for, the only person that benefits is the first purchaser. You know what I mean? Because then that person's not tied to the second sale. How do you put a continuing restriction in place to make these affordable? That's where we're stuck here. If you just say, make it 250, well, what happens if the market drops? What happens if the market goes real high? I'm not sure where we go from here. Go ahead.
Further discussion on the amendment, Counselor Letourneau.
I mean, just to pick up to your point, that was, I can remember that discussion came up with the affordable units on the other side of town. And that was a concern, that, you know, somebody could go in and it was talked to death, but it could purchase a unit and then turn it, flip it over again, and there's restrictions on that. So that can't happen. They have to, they have to keep it for, first off, they have to keep it for a certain amount of years. So they can't just go in and flip it. And I forgot what the, how, what the length of time was, but it was a considerable length of time. And, you know, as far as these units go, I was here when that, I was here with you when we voted on this. And one of the intents was to keep the affordable, well, the 55 and older component to this was very important, because we had no 55 and older in town, and this was the first one. And it's helped keeping people in town, because we're losing a lot of people that are downsizing, or moving to North Haven, or Middletown, or even Meriden, to restricted, age-restricted communities. So, you know, I don't have a problem with Counselor Fishbein's amendment on this, is, you know, on the price, keeping the price locked in at that 250, the base price.
How long? I'm getting at, how long? Where can the arbitrary?
Well...
I was saying, how long is that number placed? What is it calculated on?
Sorry. He's yielding the floor.
Are you all set, Counselor?
I am. Were you going to comment on this, or? Okay.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think that the council made a mistake on this once. I think the affordable housing component didn't work, and so at this point, I think you don't get a second bite at the apple, and you just let the market decide. So I'm against the amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
Where did, oh, Sullivan's still here. I got to say that this is probably the most harebrained thing I've ever said, because it doesn't make sense. And because Counselor Testa's right. Once you, once you... I mean, arguably, the developer himself can turn around and buy the unit without the affordable component, and turn around and, you know, hold it for whatever period of time and sell it at whatever the market dictates at that point. So that doesn't make sense. Not that I'm going to vote against my amendment, but in thinking it through, it just doesn't work. So I don't know what to do with this, and I just wanted to say, I just, unless somebody's got an idea as to how, because we sell for 250 now, and you say, you know, they have to hold it for 10 years. Okay, well, more than likely, property, real estate is going to appreciate in value over the next 10 years.
We hope.
We hope, yes. So then they sell it for, you know, a significant amount more. We already know that right now, more than likely, the market could bear a higher price. So they're buying at, you know, below market level. And that's not what we're trying to do here. So I don't have an answer. Thank you. I defer.
I think what I'd like to do, because we've spent about an hour talking about these, what are they, seven units? I think I'd like to call the vote on the amendment, and then we'll go to the public for comment.
Okay. On the amendment. Fishbein.
So you make me vote first, even though I want it, I want it, I want it to fail.
It's your amendment.
I know.
Do you need me to read the amendment, too?
I guess I'm locked in to vote yes.
Withdraw your motion.
I don't want to disappoint anyone. I will withdraw my motion.
Is there a withdrawal of the second?
I withdraw the second.
Okay, the amendment's off the table. I will go to the public for discussion. Ms. Morgenstein.
Gina Morgenstein, South Main Street. When I saw this on the agenda, there was very little backing material. There was a memo asking for this to be discussed, and Chairman Servoni pretty much saying, let's discuss this. We've sort of bandied back and forth some scenarios with salespeople, but a really legitimate review of this would be an actual review of some paperwork. I'm going to tell you the little bit of looking into this that I did on Saturday. I drove over there. I looked at the sign. The wording does say "affordable." When you pull up the website, it doesn't exist. www dot whatever slash Simpson Village, website doesn't exist. So I was trying to pretend that I'm 55, I want to buy a unit. So then I said, let me look at just a general real estate for these addresses. All of them say "unavailable," "off the market." Here I am on a Saturday, three days before the meeting, I cannot find one of these units for sale to look for any of this information this past Saturday. So we drove in, we took a look. There is one woman walking her dog, very happily living there. There is the display unit, and all the rest, as you've said, are shells. So what I'm looking at, as Jason said, $250,000 base price, is people walking in and saying, look, look at these beautiful places. And they are, they're lovely. Wallingford's lovely. You can walk to the center of town. It's a nice place to be. Do we have, can I have an answer at all from the seller or the developer? An answer as to what that display unit looks like and what the cost would be? Is that made as a $250,000 unit, or is it upgraded?
It's a $250,000 unit. There are a few upgrades that might bring it up, maybe about $3,000 for the crown molding and extra trim and hardwood floor, that's on, extra hardwood floor.
So if I walked into the sample unit, I would be looking at a $253,000 unit?
Correct.
Again, the spirit of the situation, and I look at Wallingford, and I look at our recent plan of conservation and development, and I look at older people trying to afford to live in this town and stay in this town. And the $200 per square foot price is above and beyond affordable. If you back away to a $63,000 income, and you think of yourself as someone who is trying to live within your means and live in a place like that, the lowering of the price sounds more logical to me than the unlifting of this requirement. When we have a history of, number one, $100,000 paid for the whole property; number two, the affordable units originally being looked at, being interspersed with the other units rather than segregated; number three, the affordable units being allowed to be built last; number four, the affordable units being allowed to be less a number of affordable units. I don't see that as a positive. I see that as a developer choosing to say, affordable means nothing to me. I don't care if people can afford to live in Wallingford. I care about my bottom line. I plead with you, gentlemen, this is not fair. I plead with you, gentlemen, this is not fair. Look at the ethics of our town trying to make it affordable for people to live in Wallingford. We need to set a tone, which is, our seniors matter, our general population matters, the value of being able to afford matters, not that a developer's investment, return on investment, money-making, capitalism is what matters in the town of Wallingford. Our morals. What we say to our public matters. Please. Thank you for those of you who do not believe that this is right to do, and I ask you other gentlemen to please reconsider. Thank you.
Other comments from the public? Mr. Kennedy?
On Kennedy Bowl Avenue. Let me talk to you as a senior. When I was looking for a condo a few years ago, I drove around the town, because this is a very, very nice town, and I really wanted to find someplace where I could, you know, establish. And one of the things I did is I drove right by Simpson, because it was out of my price range. As a senior, I had basically decided that I was gonna have a, a ceiling as to how much money I would spend. And these condos were very similar to where I bought, but they were way overpriced, in my opinion. The, the developer got a very nice deal from the town, and unfortunately, because of the timing and everything else, things didn't work out as it is. But my developer and my condo had cut the prices when he was having problems, and I think that the Simpson Court should probably, you know, cut their prices, because, the other point I wanted to say is the assessments have all dropped on condos. Like, our assessment, this year has dropped by $10,000. And when I looked at 501 Center, and I looked at Simpson Court, I believe everybody, all of the assessments have dropped this year. So the condo market is a very, very soft market, and I don't think we need to bend over to help the developer. I'm sure he's gonna survive. So I think we need to either get him, ask him to lower his prices, and, and make it more affordable for the seniors, you know, than for the council to give him another sweet deal. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Also in agreement with the gentleman who feel that we should not change the deal, and I agree. I mean, if you look at the market right now in Wallingford, and there's a real estate agent up there right now, she probably could help fill this in, I think there's at least 80 condo units for sale in Wallingford that are below $250,000. It's a lot of competition for the market. These are just a little under 1,100 square feet. The square there is, everybody's said, 200 and something, 220 a square foot. That's a pretty hefty price for Wallingford. You don't see many houses sell for 200 and something dollars per square foot. That's to, I'll ask that to the real estate agent. Are there many houses in Wallingford or condos that sell over the $200 square foot? 220, I think this is, in the range of.
Well, the point, the point in Wallingford-
You don't have to, you don't have to face me, you'd have to face the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. In Wallingford, there's only one condo development with a unit on, for sale right now. That's 55 and older. You really can't compare the general market to an active adult market. They're totally different animals.
The question, that wasn't, but are, do we see many, so you're putting a price premium of almost $100 a square foot on a condo because it has the 55 and older marker on it?
No, actually, the formula set the price. The formula that we had to abide by. And we reduced the price by the amount that it was on for, by $46,000.
No, no, I don't, I think that's the highest price you can ask for the unit. You can ask $50,000 for the unit if you wanted to.
So what happens to the person, like, we have, you get attached to your clients. We have a client there who already bought. And her, in future, depends on that affordability aspect, because she's, if she ever wants to sell, is gonna run into this as well, where her buyers are gonna be a limited pocket of buyers, because they can't, they can't fulfill the requirement of the affordability. And I find that painful for her.
Not, that's buyer beware. That she should, that's, that should've been explained to her going in. That's not the problem of the council, that somebody bought something, and now the price has gone down. I mean, I think there are, I'm one of them, there's people in town here who have bought properties, and in the time, some timeframes, the property goes down in value. It's just the nature of property. But getting back to, are there approximately 80 or more units for $250 or less for sale in the town of Wallingford approximately now?
I'd have to look it up.
All right, well, there are. I mean, they're, they're in that range. It could even be a little higher, because there were a few in there that were close. None of them that I saw have this 200 and something dollars per square foot. Some of, some of them were Pilgrim's Harbor. Some of them are over 2,000 square foot, and they were under $250. So you can figure out what the square footage is. I just think, as some people said, that you should leave it alone. It's a price-driven market. There's a house that sold two houses away from there, the, I think, Atkinson House there, the brick house, the two-family, next to Kowalski's old building, was on the market for a while. It just transferred for $200,000. It's 2,300 square feet, two-family, with a garage and some land. There's plenty of examples in the community where the prices, unfortunately, Wallingford's market right now is in a downturn. The prices are low, and they are going lower. And if, if they're not going to adjust to the market, if I'm going for an affordable house, and I have an income of $70,000, or $68,000, whatever the number is, and I have a choice of 80 other units to buy, I don't need to buy the affordable, I can go somewhere else. This is, they're going based on affordable pricing models, but these aren't actually affordable units. They might be affordable in another community, but in the way that this is set up, they knew going in, the builder knew going in, what they could really get for the market. It's unfortunate the market's gone down, but I don't think it's our responsibility, I mean, the town's responsibility, to take away a covenant that you've put on there just to appease the, so he can try and get the price that he wants for his units. If that's the case, I hope that you would do something so we could get higher prices for private owners that own property in town that have gone down. So I would just hope, and I doubt you're going to, but I would hope that the council would see this and vote not to change the restriction on here. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes.
I'd like to address the sales price, because it's been brought up several times tonight. For those that were back there and might remember, back in 2003, the town of Wallingford put the property up for sale. They put an RFP out, and they got zero responses. They then came back two years later, and they put the RFP out again, and they got two responses, mine and another response. Our prices were very similar. The reason I think the price was what it was, was the unknown of environmental hazardous material that was in there. And it was the town's desire to not have to deal with that, and to just turn it over to a private developer. So whether that was good for the town or bad for the town, twice it went out to bid. Once, they got zero bids. Two years later, they put it out again. And this was during a very robust real estate market. So looking at that price today, and bringing it up, I think is unfair, as to how it would, how it turned out. And the other thing I'd like to address again is, we're not having an issue with the marketability of our units. The issue we have is that anybody that has come to look at the units in the last 18 months that they've been on the market, any qual, any buyer that had an interest in purchasing, unfortunately, was overqualified in terms of income. And right there, we weren't able to sell them the unit that they wanted. And people don't have to make $68,000 to afford here, as I said before. By the formula that was worked out, the maximum sales price of these units, at 80% of income, is $296,000. We did build lower than that. We did go quite a bit lower than that, to allow a greater range of people to buy it. Unfortunately, after 18 months of marketing the units, we haven't been able to sell them. It's not the price. If people think it's overpriced, that's fine, they don't have to buy it. But there's a lot of people that do wanna buy it. And it's not the, the opportunity is there for anybody to buy it right now if they want. But this dual restriction, as Counselor Testa brought up, and I forgot to bring that up earlier, we have a 55 and older, and we have a restriction on income. The Section 830G of the state statute, which encouraged affordable housing, that was set in place, it's not, it usually is not municipal-friendly. Generally, that statute's invoked by a developer who wants to take a 15-acre parcel of land that you would normally put 15 houses on, and he wants to put 80 houses on. And that just happened in North Haven, and that's why I'm familiar with that. And the town actually fought that, but they had no choice, because 830G was designed to encourage that type of development, to allow for affordable housing. And just one more note I'd like to put on it. When the RFP originally came out, there was zero mention of affordable housing. The only restriction the RFP had to sell the land was, they wanted it to be 55 and older. It wasn't until we actually sat here and started negotiating the fine points of the contract, that someone, somewhere, came up and said, "Jeez, you know, it'd be nice to have these as affordable." So lifting the income restriction, we're still way below what would be classified as affordable. So the spirit of-
And when you say that, you mean under the statutory definition?
Under our definition, under our contract, and the statutory definition. Yeah. Because under the statutory definition, it's $296,000. We're at $250,000. And although I think everybody would love to see the market jump, where pricing would go up that high, I think it's already established, we're, we're at a market price already, and quite frankly, who knows 10 years from now what the market price could be? But it's the income restriction that we're asking to be lifted. We're still, we still fit in the definition of affordable. And anyways, as we said earlier, this was a, having the two restrictions was something that was new. To be quite honest with you, I don't think you can find any other developments out there that are 55 and older and income-restricted. That's, generally, you don't see that. And we haven't been able to find any in the state that have that, the dual restrictions on them.
Thank you. With that, I think I'm gonna call the vote on the motion on the floor. If you could, for the benefit of Counselor Fishmine, do this in reverse order, I would appreciate it.
No problem. Let me just get to my, um-
Apparently, Mr. Hine would like to comment.
All right.
I actually, James Hine, 342 South Elm. I just, one thing was unclear to me, and that was, if you reduce the price, would the income threshold change, or would that remain the same?
The income threshold does not change.
Okay. In that case, then, I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Zandry. My impression, my belief, is that if you lowered the price, you would actually then start to attract more people that fall underneath that income threshold. At $250, anybody making less than, especially somebody over 55 who's concerned about how they're gonna be able to afford their retirement, is not going to be looking at a $250,000 home. They'd be looking for something a little bit cheaper. And so, you know, to, to basically come and ask the council to lift that restriction without having even attempted to reduce that price, and see if it encourages or attracts people, I have a problem with that. And I think all of you should have a problem with that, because that was what was originally agreed to. When somebody comes here tonight and says, "We want this restriction lifted, but we haven't tried to do everything that we could to sell the property with that restriction on there," that should be a problem. That should be a problem, and you guys should take issue with that. That was what was originally agreed to. And, you know, I've heard, I've heard here tonight that, well, people need to change with the, with the times, and, well, right now, you have somebody asking you to change with the times. Shouldn't that go both ways? If you can't sell the property for $250, maybe you reduce the asking price. I, I think that's, that's something that should be asked. I've also heard, you know, made, made mention of the fact that we live in a capitalist society. Well, yes, that's right. And one of the foundations of that are contracts and agreements. And that's, and there was a contract, and there was an agreement here. That's the foundation of a capitalist society. So, you know, I, I think you guys really should think about this, and I, I tend to think, most of you probably have your minds made up, but, but I really think that you have somebody here who agreed to these restrictions, and I think should be held to those restrictions. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Is it, can we? What are we voting on now? I gotta understand this.
I'm gonna read it.
The initial motion.
I'll read the motion. The motion is to approve the removal of the affordable housing restriction imposed by the council on Simpson Village.
May I make a point? Sure. I, I, I think in fairness to Mr. DeRosa, we've gotta understand that we, we are talking about, we're almost arbitrarily, a lot of the discussion is arbitrary right now, about what people think is affordable, and, and we're, we're off track. It's a motion. And then we're also talking about holding them to what they agreed to. We've gotta understand, if we hold them to what we imposed, the sales price is $296. That's what we've gotta understand. Any other discussion is arbitrary. We start talking about telling them the lower price, telling them the lower price, sure, we can tell them and do that, but remember, the, if I'm not, if I'm wrong, correct me. The restrictions we put in say that the income level's 68, and according to that formula, the sales price should be $296. If we hold them to their deal, yes, that's what it is. Am I, if I'm incorrect, correct me. So if we, so, and the problem is, the income level. So we could very easily say, "Let's hold them to the formula that establishes the sales price, and eliminate the income requirement," even though you have to use that income requirement and calculate their sales price. So the spirit of what we said was, "Use the state formula for affordable housing." That means the sales price can't be higher than $296 right now, today. And they're, they're trying to sell them at $250, and they can't sell them. So he can do whatever he wants to sell them. If we, if we hold them to this, to the deal, they can't sell them for more than $296. We could say, "Forget the, drop the income requirement so they can find better, different buyers." Everything else is kind of, is an arbitrary discussion right now. Just like, and honestly, so was our discussion originally. We were trying to come up with something. Remember, our, our intent was to have that property developed fruitfully for the town. We had some ideas. The 55 and older was our prime concern. The affordability thing was an afterthought that we thought would be nice. Well, you see, it's not working. But again- But again, if we say, let's not remove it, they're free to go out and continue to sell these at two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars, because that's what we told them they had to do. So I would be in favor of an amendment that would require that the affordability calculation for sales price remain. We allow them to remove the income restriction so that buyers can still qualify. And consider that a motion right now as an amendment. I move that.
Is there a second on the amendment?
And can he repeat that?
I would. And the reason I'm doing this is because if we vote yea or nay, removing it totally lets them go free to go anywhere on the sales price in the future, and there's no affordability calculation. If we say no, well, we're really not... We're not really facing reality here. So my motion would be to amend... amend the motion so that the...
Affordability formula?
Yeah, the affordability... Yeah, I'm just thinking, because the motion was to remove the affordability requirement. I would make a motion that the affordability requirement for income be removed, but the affordability calculation for sales price remain, according to the formula as it is calculated.
Is that something you can work with?
I can work with that.
Okay. There's a motion... There's an amendment on the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Letourneau?
Does that work, Mr. DeRosa, what's being proposed? Give me a second. Yeah, I believe that works. It still meets the intent of the town and allows us to market them and...
Counselors Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to have another opportunity just to speak my thoughts again. And I do agree with Counselor Testa that some of this has become emotional, and some of it has become arbitrary to the main discussion, but I think it's also a critical point. I mean, I'll use my own example from my mother as an example, who's selling her home right now. She's well under this requirement at sixty-eight thousand dollars, but her house is for sale and will probably fetch about two-hundred thousand dollars. If she wanted to move into this establishment, she'd have to take a mortgage for the first time in about twenty-five years. And I think this is a piece of what the way I'm looking at it. Maybe I'm not looking at it as everybody else is, but here's a retired woman who only has social security as an income and a small source of outside income that would have to take on a mortgage for the first time in thirty years in order to live there. That's where I call into the question of what's really affordable. And I'm not talking about the fact that someone made sixty-nine thousand dollars a year instead of sixty-eight. When I'm looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars for a square foot for this home and a two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand median-sized home at a hundred-and-fifty-two square foot, that tells me, whether it's condo or house, there are larger homes at less per square foot than you get for the same money and maybe some yard. And now, yes, you have to take care of the yard, but that's why there's a two-hundred-dollar condo fee at the condo. I wanted to maintain some level of affordability for people to afford to live in a median or lower-priced home. And if we remove the restriction, the houses can go to whatever it wants to do, or the income range can go wherever it goes. And if we suddenly allow a person that's making ninety thousand, or a couple that's making a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars to live here, we've locked out somebody who makes fifty or forty that just can't afford to sell their hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-dollar house to live over there because it's not affordable to them. And that's what the spirit of what I'm trying to look at here. I'm no way trying to dictate what they should sell the houses for or what the market will bear, but clearly, the market's bearing lower than this if the sales are still happening around them. It's why I don't want to change the components. And I just wanted to reiterate why I'm going to continue to not support the action. Thank you.
Any discussion on the amendment? You call the vote on the amendment, please.
Certainly. Would you like me to read it, just to make sure?
Well, make sure it's correct for the record. That would probably be a good idea.
Yes, please. So the amendment is to remove the affordability requirement for income calculation, but to keep the affordability calculation for sales price. And would you like me to go in reverse for the amendment, Chairman?
There's a question regarding the amendment as described. Counselor Zandry? Do you not understand the amendment?
You said Zandry.
I mean, Fishbine. You're... I'm inverting you in my brain.
Inverting or pervert?
Both.
Because that appeared to be the sum and substance of what is being discussed.
Correct.
Whereas I thought all that we were dealing with right now is the amendment, which I think... I think the amendment is to utilize the calculation in the state program for pricing, and that's it.
That wasn't what was stated by Counselor Testa, though.
I remember, we... When we did this originally, we didn't think... We didn't care about income, and we just wanted to make sure it was affordable.
I'm not...
Yeah, the formula results in a sales price.
Can we focus on the language of the amendment?
Yeah. The language of the amendment.
So the amendment is just to keep the affordability requirement for sales price.
That's basically what I said.
Yeah.
Which really does become the full motion. I agree with Counselor Fishbine.
Do we all have a clear idea of what the amendment is?
So just procedurally, if the amendment passes, is this item done with?
No, then we have to vote on the underlying motion.
Okay. Because I see an overlap, that's all. And maybe nobody else sees it, but... Those are my comments. I don't know. I'm still thinking.
The other option is that Counselor Laffin could accept Counselor Testa's amendment, and we could have one vote.
No.
Okay. Then we need a vote on the amendment.
Okay. Fishbine? Laffin?
No.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Chertelle?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Vote yes, but the amendment fails.
Correct.
All right. Okay, let's have a vote on the motion as it stands.
The motion as it stands without the amendment.
That's correct.
Thank you. Fishbine?
So the motion is to...
The motion is to approve...
Just remove the restriction.
Approve removal of the affordable housing restriction imposed by the council on Simpson Village.
Okay. Then I'm voting yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertelle?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Couldn't look the people who elected me to this office in the eye if I voted yes. No.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time. I hope you're all at least happy with the development the way it's come out. I know we're very proud of it. Thank you.
Onto item eight. We are going to revisit our votes on the decision to revise the charter because we have waited quite some time to come up with the charter charge. So we need a motion to revise the charter.
Mr. Chairman, I move we revise the town charter.
Well, I actually... We... Just procedurally, at this... We can't make a motion to revise the charter.
Well, just to be clear. To send it out for revision. How's that?
Yeah, to appoint a commission or... Okay.
You clear on the motion? To appoint a charter revision commission?
Basically, to appoint a charter revision commission.
Is that the second motion? The first one I wrote here, it's one and the same. So can I change it? Yes. Okay. I move that we reaffirm the establishment of our charter revision commission to review and propose possible revisions to the town charter. That is to consist of Christina Tatta, Robert Swick, Steve Knight, Jim Seichter, Tom Corrigan, Mark Gingras, Jim Piscotti, Patricia Cole, Jonathan Chapel, Gina Morgenstein, and Sam Carmody.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a memo from Corporation Council Small that you need to establish a deadline as well.
That's on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion... Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next motion.
Mr. Chairman...
It's to charge the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we charge the charter revision commission.
In accordance with the document that's in our file?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the charge? I wonder, for the benefit of the public, if we should read the charge. Counselor Laffin, would you indulge me?
Charge of the Charter Commission, two thousand sixteen, number one, Chapter two, Section two, consider the term for all elected officials to be four years. Number two, Chapter four, Section one, consider the appointment and hiring process for the town clerk. Number three, Chapter four, Section three, consider removal or abolishment of Board of Tax Review. Number four, Chapter four, Section four, consider the continued need for town constables. Number five, Chapter five, Section three, consider the continued need for Board of Selectmen. Number six, Chapter eight, Section three, consider the legality and effectiveness of the building inspector being the zoning enforcement officer. Number seven, Chapter ten, Section four, consider a process of the hiring the fire marshal by the fire chief. Chapter eight... So I'm sorry. Number eight, Chapter eleven, Section three, consider the need for the Department of Welfare. Number nine, Chapter fourteen, Section two, consider expanding the Public Utilities Committee beyond three members. Number ten, Chapter fourteen, Section thirteen, consider the town council's veto power of an action of the PUC to end fifteen days after notice to the town council. Number eleven, consider integrating electronic publication into the charter where appropriate. And finally, number twelve, consider amending the language of the charter to be gender-inclusive where appropriate.
Any discussion by the council on the charge? Any discussion or comment from the public? Ms. Morgenstein.
Gina Morgenstein, South Main. I think I know the answer, but just to be sure, we're not limiting ourselves to discussing these, but these are the council's recommendation.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Ms. Tatta?
Christina Tatta, seven hundred and fifty-one North Farms Road. Not specifically about the charge, but just a question in general. I don't believe that the charter is posted on the town website. There is a copy with the revisions from the last revision committee that weren't adopted, and I was just wondering if that's something that maybe could be posted on the town website just for general reference, so people don't have to go to the library to get an actual copy.
We looked into that, and it was tough getting it into a PDF from the printer.
I'll make one for you.
I'm just... It wasn't... I'm just telling you, I don't control the website.
The council will do what it can to get it... To get a copy on the website.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the charge? Why don't you have a roll called?
Fishbine?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertelle?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
I have to ask for clarification because I was out of the room.
Oh. We read the charge of the charter. Are you okay with that?
We're... Just the reading of it, and we're accepting it as written?
You're accepting that as the charge?
The charge to the commission.
To the commission.
Okay. Yes, I can support that.
Thank you. Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now we need to specify a deadline for the charter revision commission. I believe the statute entitles up to sixteen months, and the question becomes whether the council wants to limit the time to less than sixteen months, as sixteen months is the most we can give them. Counselor Fishbine?
Is it possible that we just set the deadline and tell them that they have to report to us by a particular date? I don't know that it's required that we actually set a drop-dead date.
Attorney Farrell?
I think you do have to set a drop-dead date.
For a final report.
Yes.
But, you know, let's say if we set it fifteen months from now, and the commission's done three months from now, is it expected that the commission's going to sit on this for a year? I mean...
I don't think that's what it means. I think that you're giving it an outside thing. You're not precluding them from coming back earlier.
Yes, that's exactly what I said. So I would suggest that we set an outside date, and if they want to come earlier, so be it.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
I think that's almost part of the statute. I don't think you need to put that in the motion, but if you want to, that's fine.
I'd suggest we go out fifteen months and, you know, or even sixteen, and that's the end, and if they finish earlier... They finish earlier, they come to us. It's not rocket science.
Give them as much time as they need. They can come back as early as they're done.
Sure. So fifteen months would be, I believe, July twelfth. Is there a motion?
That's a Wednesday.
Well, understood. July, we usually have one meeting. Is that, based upon past practice, is that where we would fall, or...
We haven't set the calendar for 2017 yet.
But I guess it's just a report anyway, and we wouldn't have necessarily a meeting on that particular day. So with that being understood, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set the date for July twelfth. Is that 2018?
That would be a Wednesday.
2017. That...
I don't think the report date necessarily has to fall on the night that we would regularly...
Make it June thirtieth, for goodness sake.
Okay. I'll amend. We'll make it June thirtieth, 2017.
Moved and seconded for June thirtieth, 2017. Any discussion on the date?
Yes.
Oh. Counselor Chertelle?
Being this is a rookie question, so from the end of that time period, I guess, what's the deadline to get it on the ballot?
Has anybody got a calendar?
I'm assuming we're aiming for 2017. So what is the lag time? Does that have to be done by nine-one, or...
Traditionally, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but it is September.
Okay. So then my next question would be, if we're setting this deadline for July, and I've only been up here for four months, but things seem to run on a different calendar up here, how...
Thanks for your optimism.
It's not your fault, Mini. Well, it's a little bit your fault. How... I mean, is that enough time for this council to get it from, okay, the commission recommended these changes, and now we're agreeing... You know, we're voting on that, agreeing to that. Is that going to happen in thirty days? Right? Doesn't... I don't think it... It doesn't seem like it will. I would recommend the date be a little bit earlier, but that's just a rookie's observation. That's a good one.
Mr. Chairman? No. It's June thirty.
Still doesn't seem like a lot of time, but...
Counselor Testa?
Yeah. Where... Where's...
Yeah, we're speaking here of a draft report? So this is where I'm afraid we're taking it out too far, because the statute, doesn't the statute specify when the whole process has to be completed? By which, the timeframe by which the process has to be completed? Try not to end in a preposition here. Because what I'm thinking of, after we see a draft report, we then can give them feedback, we can ask them to go back and reconsider, then we have to take it up and vote on it ourselves, then we have to decide to put it, I'm thinking, going out, if the deadline for everything is sixteen months, draft report should be, no, it's not?
No.
What is it?
It's merely for them to come to us with their recommendations.
Okay.
To modify the charter, and then there's other time periods that happen after.
That's what I want to clarify. So really, the sixteen months is the statute requirement for a draft report?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, I'm fine.
I defer to the Law Department, but that's my...
I thought, I didn't think that. Where, is that right? Yeah, there's a lot of things that have to happen, and that's why Mr. Chertel was asking. A lot of things have to happen. Is step one, their first report to us, actually sixteen months out? If that's what it says, then I'm good with the motion.
I pulled up Attorney Small's memorandum.
Yeah.
And item number six says the town council is required to specify the deadline for the commission to submit its draft report. The deadline shall be not later than sixteen months from the date of appointment of the commission.
All right, we're good.
Then it talks about other stuff.
That is a draft report within the town...
Okay, I just was under the, I'm good.
Counselor Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, just to you or to the town attorney, we could do special meetings, it really doesn't have to land on a council meeting. We have, always have that option to a special meeting, right? So I think that's something we need to make sure, you know, we understand there's an option for a special meeting.
Understood. Any other comments from the council? Comments from the public? Mr. Chapel?
I just wanted to take a walk. Jonathan Chapel on 90 State and Hill Road. I just want to throw out to the council that these deadlines, sixteen month deadline for a draft report, to me seems, it could run afoul of the getting it on the ballot in 2017, and I've been counsel, with an S counsel, to charter commissions, and that does become a problem. So I would suggest that the deadline for the draft be a little more aggressive than sixteen months, that's all.
Mr. Chapel, I was actually on the last charter revision commission, and that commission was appointed, I believe, in the fall of '09, yeah. And we were given, I think, a twelve month deadline, and it managed to get on the ballot for the 2010 election.
The way I would suggest is to work back from the 2017 general election. And then figure out the deadlines that apply to having public hearing number one, public hearing number two, councils' presentation and public hearing, and that way you sort of know when the draft should come in. That's what I would suggest. I don't know that that frankly needs to be decided tonight, but I think that waiting, giving a draft report to you next July creates some havoc potentially for the commission, for yourselves, and for the town law department as needed, and for the clerk to get it on the ballot. That's my suggestion.
Thank you, any further public comment? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The intent here, at least from me, is not to hamstring the commission, not to give a date, you know, that's so draconian, you know, dude, you're done, give us the report. Certainly, whatever constraints, you know, I think we appointed a really good commission that can work together and decide when it feels that it's completed its work and that it comes to us. As I said, I don't want to hamstring the commission. I don't see you taking all of that time. But it might, based upon your individual schedules, how you're able to, you know, do meetings and all of that stuff. So, you know, I take Mr. Chapel's comments, you know, to heart, but it's really upon you guys to decide when you're done, and, you know, I would urge you that when you're done, let's have the report, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Attorney Farrell, once the, once we have the report and we've had our two public hearings, what is then our timeline for getting the revisions on a ballot?
I'd have to review the memo again.
I have it here if you want.
Counselor Fishbein, if you can review it more quickly?
It says the commission submits its draft report to the town clerk, who then forwards it to the council. Town council holds at least one public hearing on the draft report. The last public hearing on the draft report must be held within forty-five days of the date of submission to the town clerk. Within fifteen days after the last public hearing, the town council shall make recommendations, if any, to the commission for changes in the draft report. If the town council does not make any recommendations for changes within the fifteen days, the report shall become final, and the town council will act on the report as far as getting on the ballot. If the town council does make, oh wait, does not make any recommendations or changes, the commission shall confer with the town council, and the commission may amend the report or reject the town council's recommendations. In either case, the commission shall make its report within thirty days after receiving the town council's recommendations, and then within fifteen days after receipt of the final report, the town council may approve, reject, or reject separate provisions and accept others, and then within thirty days after the approval, the proposed amendment shall be published in the newspaper. And then by a majority vote of the entire members of the town council shall determine whether the proposed amendment shall be submitted to the electors at a regular or special election, I guess to occur no later than fifteen months after the approval.
Okay, so with all of that being said, it seems to me that it's plausible that with all of those timelines, that it could end up in the November 2018 regular election. So I think there's plenty of cushion room there, and if we get anxious about it, we can discuss having a special election to vote on the charter. So.
I think you, one thing you need to know is at what point does the town clerk have to have it in order to get it on the ballot?
It's sometime in the first fifteen days of September, I just don't have the date. Every year, the election calendar changes.
So you call September the time all of it has to be completed. The timeframe really is short there between June and September to get all those things done and have that able to be printed for a ballot.
Absolutely.
So it doesn't mean it can't happen if the report comes in a lot sooner than that, then that's fine, but to, if you're expecting it to be the 17th November, it really has to be finished as of September.
No, I, that point is well taken. My point was, if we run afoul of the first fifteen days of September, it seems to me that with a fifteen month deadline after that, this could be on the November of 2018 ballot and still be within the statutory time period. So we've got a few cushions there. So with that, we have a proposed deadline to the charter revision commission of June 30th, they can come in earlier. Is there any further discussion? That is June 30th, 2017. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. That takes care of item number eight on the agenda. Onto item number nine, discussion possible action with regard to the 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Counselor Fishbein, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did submit some backup with regard to this item, and I noticed it's not part of our packet. In my due diligence, I did make a copy for all of the counselors.
We get it now?
I submitted it with my item.
Tonight, I mean, come on.
I submitted it with my item, it wasn't included in your packet, that's not my fault. You've all seen these documents before anyway. I mean, they're the press release of 12/31/15 with regard to the audit, and page 19 from the audit. So I guess, Mr. Boz, you know, I've been hearing things since January about representations, surpluses, you know, all sorts of stuff, and I did submit this as an agenda item back in, I think, January, but for whatever, you know, many different reasons, it hasn't been able to be addressed. So I'm looking at paragraph five of the press rela, do you have a copy?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And there's been a lot of talk about, from various different corners, whether or not the representations in that paragraph are accurate, and whether or not there should be a revision. So I just want to give you an opportunity. Do you want to revise what's in there, or?
Well, no. This is not Jim Boz's press release.
Okay.
So he wouldn't be the one to revise it. This came out of the mayor's office. Do I think it's inaccurate? No, I don't.
And the reason why?
For Jim Boz to be weighing in on whether he thinks it should be changed, you're talking to the wrong person.
Okay, well, I think I'm talking to the right person, because on numerous occasions, Mayor, you've been asked about the content, and on each occasion, you've deferred to Mr. Boz, and you were specifically asked about the content of the press release.
No, that is not the case.
Okay.
I've been asked about it, and I said, I stand by what was stated in the press release. This is a summary of the audit.
Okay.
It is not going to be treated as something that has to repeat the audit in its detail. It's meant to be a guide for someone to understand what the key factors are for all of us, council, mayor's office, and the community. But can you add and subtract various figures to any of those things? I suppose you can, depending upon the amount of your accounting knowledge and what you're looking for, but the figures as presented are accurate. But they are a summary.
So I don't know how, you know, there's not a lot of accounting knowledge, I don't think that's necessary here, but just looking at that paragraph five, it states that the council approved certain revenue for this particular budget, and that the revenue that came in was over what was projected by $2.8 million.
That's correct.
Okay. And that the council also projected or authorized certain expenditures, and that the expenditures during that time period that were authorized came in $2.5 million, then less than what was authorized.
That's correct.
Okay. So if I take the two of those together, that shows me a variance of about $6 million.
Five, looks like about five point, oh yes, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. So what was the surplus?
Yeah, that's a, let me, if I may. The surplus has to be looked at based upon how it relates to the various components of fund balance and what happens.
Can you just tell me, can you just tell me, how do you define surplus?
Well, the surplus would be, and I think I've said this before, and if I'm repeating myself, I apologize, it's what actually happens, it's not budget to budget anymore. It's what you actually receive in revenues, and you subtract out what you actually had in expenditures, and hopefully the difference is a positive number, which would be what we refer to as an operating surplus. Which, if you take a look at all of the components of fund balance, the mayor's address tries to address one of them, the unassigned. And I don't know if you want me to get into categorization, which I can, but I think I have before, but it's up to you folks.
Well, one of...
If I may, I think I can summarize it quickly, because I know it's late. The categories of fund balance are unassigned, okay, which is free, okay? It's free for utilization, for appropriation, there's no legal clause, there's no legal hold on that, okay? Then there's other components of fund balance as well, that have been designated for utilization in a different period. For example, the 4.3 million we utilize to balance the budget, the appropriations in force, and I think that's where a lot of this is coming from, Councilman. In the amount on page 82 of the CAFR, now, the CAFR is the official audit report, and that shows you the balance sheet, actually, it's called something different, but let's just call it a balance sheet, statement of assets and liabilities, and what you've got left over, which is our fund balance. And it shows a, the categorization and how they change from the fiscal year ending June 30th, 14, to June 30th, 15. And the total fund balance grew $2 million, and I'm rounding a little bit, okay? One million of that was in a...
Can I just?
Sure.
I don't want to, when you say the total fund balance increased by about $2 million, is that $2,700,000?
That's correct, 2,007, yeah.
Okay, so that's reflected on the page 19 of the audit, where it says net change in fund balances.
I hope so. I hope so, or else I'm getting the wrong number, yeah. And I do, I beg your pardon for rounding a little bit. So, but approximately a million of that, and again, I'm just rounding a little bit, we cannot utilize, because that is the increase in our appropriations in force, what we call carryforwards, primarily because, as you probably recall, the 1% fund, as we sometimes call it, the state statute allows the governing body to appropriate up to 1% of a school board's unspent funds to be utilized in the, in the next fiscal, or a new fiscal period and carried forward, if you will. So that really through, the fact that it was, and it was less than $800,000, it was 760, or 770, or something like that. So basically, that is a restriction on, if you're looking on page 82 of the CAFR, you'll see that that amount designated for, excuse me, let me get my own CAFR. I apologize, I'm not even turned to the page yet. Okay, the committed fund balance went up $1 million, that's basically where the appropriations in force increase, takes about a million of that, $2 million, sort of outside of the ability to be utilized, because it's been legally bound, which is the very largest difference between, you know, a governmental balance sheet at a, the Fishbein Law Firm balance sheet, okay, very, very different, very, very weird. Where you're seeing the $974,000 is in the unassigned fund balance growth between 14, ending at 15, fiscal year 15, ending on the balance sheet. That's what we've done, that is the item that is mentioned in the mayor's summary, if you will, just to try to give folks a thought as to what is usable going forward. We cannot use the appropriations in force, we cannot use the amounts assigned for encumbrances or for designating, balancing the upcoming year's budget. So once those are locked legally, that's the biggest difference between a governmental balance sheet, if you will, and a private balance sheet. So that's what the mayors try to, frankly, we try just to keep things simple, and something So, that's what the mayors try to, frankly, we try just to keep things simple, and something understandable. I remember a couple of years back, not that this is the do-all-and-be-all reason, but it, I think we came out with a statement that said, I don't remember what it was, Mayor, but I think it was 2 point something million dollars. But we had used more to balance the budget in the previous year. We had encumbrances, and we had appropriations in force, and then what happened was also in the mayor's letter saying, "Well, that we only have X amount to go towards the next year's budget." And people said, "Well, wait a minute, how could you have?" And I got maybe 12 or 14, 15 phone calls that year, just from citizens, just terrific phone calls, great inquiries, saying, you know, "Hey, how could you say you got $2 million to the good, and you're only, you can only use $200,000 more?" Because it was tied up in other areas. So, we've tried to simplify it. That's, that's all we tried to do, councilman.
But ultimately, well, how do, how do you define surplus?
Well, the surplus is revenues subtracted from expenditures.
Well, it's anticipated revenues.
No, forget anticipate, it's actual. Forget, forget anticipated, because at that point in time, when the year is done, the budget, the budget, I don't want to say is meaningless, please, because that's going to really throw people off, but what really matters is what actually happened, okay? I could say our budget was $300 million.
No, but, but when you, you're doing zero-based accounting, in effect, you're saying at the, when the budget is approved, that all of our revenue has to meet all of our expenditure.
We have to adopt, by state statute, a balanced budget. That's correct.
So, when there's a variance in those two numbers, when it's something other than zero--
Uh huh.
Budget's approved at zero, and if at the end of the day, your income is more than you had budgeted for, and your expenses are less than you had budgeted for, then I don't see how that isn't a surplus.
Because--
Because contrary, if it was the other way around, it would be a deficit.
You're correct. That's correct.
Okay, so--
But let's, let's take a very, forget about the $150 million, because that does get to be a big number. Let's take $1,000 bucks. We have a $1,000 budget, and we spend $900. I think, would, would most people say that was a good year? Can I get, no, that's, no, that's from the council, I'm sorry. I think most, maybe from the audience, there's nobody left, I think most folks would probably say, "Pretty good year." My answer would be, "Mm, I don't know, because I don't know what happened on the revenue side." And frankly, I don't care. Once the year is over, I don't care about the budget, as long as we met our legalities, as long as we didn't overspend our line items, you know what I'm talking about. But now, like, let's say on the revenue side, oh, we only spent $900 of the $1,000 we budgeted, we got $800 in of the $1,000 we budgeted. Do we have a good year, or did we have a bad year? We had a bad year. We had a deficit of $100 bucks. So, technically, at that point in time, the budget, just trying to make, you know, simple numbers here, doesn't really matter at that point in time. It's what actually happened. We received $800 in revenue, and we spent $900, which means we had an actually operating deficit for that one year of $100.
But looking back to us, if we have a variance of about $6 million--
Correct.
And we took money from reserves for 4 point something--
From the prior year's audited balance. That's correct.
We took it, yeah, not from the existing--
But not from this--
Not from that tax year, from, from something else, okay?
But it's reserved on this, on the June 30th, 2015 balance sheet, as a part of what is called the assigned fund balance.
Sure.
So, we cannot--
We, in effect, subsidized, you know, without that cash inflow, the tax increase would have been a lot more.
That's correct.
So, you sort of got to figure out, you know, if we're going to subsidize, the $6 million minus the 4 point something gets us around 2. So, is that the 2 point, 2.07? Is that the simple math on that?
No, no, I wish I could say it was, but no, it's not.
It works out generally that way.
Because what it, what the 2.07 is, is what actually happened, not compared to budget.
Okay, so when I ask you the question, "How much was the surplus for this particular year that we're talking about", what was the surplus?
It's $2 million, of which $974,000 was available to be used in the future, AKA, the growth in the unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
Which is what the mayor's page and a half summary just tried to simplify.
So, then there's 1 point something that--
That's correct. Most of that was, if you take a look at the balance sheet on page 82, between the two years, the growth of one, between 1.8 million, up to $2.8 million, and what they call the, I'll call the committed fund balance, that's what the appropriations in force are part of those figures, and most of that growth was because the school system did not spend approximately $770,000, let's, $800,000. For example, let's say they did. Let's say the schools didn't need to come to the council to say, "We don't need, you know, we don't need that money." The surplus would have been $1.2 million, of which $974,000 would have been good, because the $800,000 would have been expended, and that $2 million would have been less. But it would not have changed the amount and the growth of the unassigned portion of the fund balance, hence the amount that the council had to, has to use going forward into the future.
Okay.
Up, no, 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 don't forget what the June 15th date is. It's only a snapshot in time of our balance sheet. Close of business date, June 30th, bingo. There's your assets, your liabilities, and what's left, which is the fund balance. That's all the, that's all the mayor's two-page summary tried to do.
So, looking at page 19 from the audit--
Yes.
There's no mention of the 1% account.
That's correct.
And yet, it, it says that the net change to the fund balances is the 2 point million.
That's correct.
So, I don't know how the fund balance changes by $2 million if it's just $974 that can be touched.
Well, the $974, that's, that's, that's a question that everyone asks, and that's, it's an excellent question. The nine, let me, let me, let me try it this way. In that example that we gave, well, let's, let's just say we, we made $1,000 in revenue this year. Forget about budget. We spent $800. We had a good year, okay? We had $200 to the good. But we said to ourselves, "You know what? I want to save $150 for a car repair," or something, let's forget about. So, we self-impose, okay, a use of $150 of that money, and therefore, what really is free, and that's $50.
Okay, so--
That's what the, but, but now, if you and I are doing this in our household budgets, or if you're doing this in the Fishbein Law Firm budget, or the, or the shady guy to your right there, his budget, the lampshade guy, okay? You guys' budget is very important to your businesses, I'm sure of that, but it doesn't carry with it the weight of law, which is the tremendous difference between government and non-governmental financial statements. We have to show those restrictions as unused.
Bringing it back to this--
Sure.
After the credits and all that stuff, there's $2 million. That's the $1,000--
That's the $1 million growth between the committed fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2014.
Yeah, but your, your example was you have $1,000--
Oh, I'm sorry.
You had $800 in expenses, you have $200 left, and you self-impose $150.
That's right.
Okay? So, using what we're at here, we have, after its income minus expenses, you have $2 million left.
Of which we self-imposed over a million dollars.
So, that's what I want to figure out.
Yes.
Where does the self-impose come from? Did the council authorize that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for answering your own question, but yes, you guys authorized it through a couple of mechanisms. Number one, you guys looked last night at page, oh, gosh, 89, appropriations in force. Fair fact, I have to get you an answer. I did not have a chance today to speak to the police chief, so I haven't forgotten that answer I owe you. But those amounts there are adopted, and in a motion that we have come for, come forward to you people, to you people, to you good gentlemen, on May 10th of this year, you will be adopting that as a separate motion, as the appropriations in force. So, you folks, that kind of binds that $150, if you will, in my, my simple, polite example.
So, there's got to be--
So, the difference is--
There was an appropriation, or there was an approval to self-impose $1 million, in effect.
$1 million more than what was available, that's right. That's correct. About $800,000 for the schools, and I know it was a little bit less than that.
The schools aren't part of this.
Yes, they are. They're part of the 1%, the 1% fund, even though we're calling it that, because that's what the statutes refer to it as. That is, we, you folks approve that.
I know about the 1% fund, but--
It's part, it's part of--
In looking at the audit, I don't see that the 1% comes out of this $2 million.
It's part of, it's, it is. It's part of the, that's the only way that the balance sheet could flow from 1.8 million in '14 to 2.8 million, almost 2.9 million in 2015. Financial statements in government are difficult to try to follow the flow, councilman, so I, I understand exactly what you're going through. But in my simple example of that $100 profit that, you know, our firm made, and we self-imposed $150 bucks of it, there are many more than that in government, and that's why it, you almost have to reinvent the wheel every time you, you close your fiscal year down, which we usually try to close in September, late, later in September, because there's transactions in July and August, and even into early September that affect the old year. So, that's, that's, that identifies amounts to the readers of the financials, like the mayor was stating before, that there is something here that's holding, that's binding us. It could be an incumbent, encumbrances are part of the assigned fund balance as well. In other words--
So, you're saying, if I take the 2.07, and I subtract out the 1% for the Board of Ed, and then the appropriations in force, and then subtract 974, it'll be a zero? That's what you're telling me of the components?
No, there's, no, because there's--
I know, because I've done that.
You'd be close, but you wouldn't be there, and let me tell you why. Changes in purchase orders from one fiscal year ended to the next. The next, the next category of fund balance. You are correct. You would not get there, unless you had every purchase order and saw how that purchase order was fulfilled, or not fulfilled, by the end of the June 30th, 2015 fiscal year. It was all a matter of just trying to keep things simple, to be quite honest.
All right, well, thank you for your information. I--
If you'd like, if you do have some time, if you don't mind giving me after the budget, after you folks adopt, if you want to call and make some time and shoot over, you can bring me a Vinny's sandwich, and we can go over it a little bit more, if you'd like. I'm serious. I mean that. I mean the sandwich, and I, I mean my offer to you, because I, I do appreciate the fact that you're, you're digging into it. But I don't want anyone leaving here tonight, on the council, or anyone else who's watching on TV, thinking that there was any reason to, I guess the words, people show me these articles, because honestly, I, I don't pay too much attention to them, to hide fund balance. And then somebody unfortunately brought me an article that same fellow wrote two weeks prior to that, that said I was hoarding it, or we were hoarding it, because of, we wanted to keep a AAA bond rating. So, I went in two weeks from a hoarder to a hider, but I can't hide, because this is, and Jason, you've gone through these, right? Can I hide this? I mean, it was not an intent, believe me, do you think I want, we want this grief in my life, or our lives? I mean, we don't. It was just a matter of trying to make things simple, and to try to show the council, and like the mayor said, and the public, as to what you folks have free going from this point forward. That's all it was. We can't, we can't hide it, guys. It's, it's the audit. If we did try to hide it, believe me, we would not get a clean audit report. They'd probably stop the audit somewhere halfway through, and Vinny, I know you, then Testa's got a financial background, you must have dealt with auditors in your time, so they would stop the audit in mid, in mid-flight, and say, call a meeting with you guys, and say, "There's something going on in your finance office," you know, so, anyway. I'm sorry, I know it's getting late. I'll shut up.
Mayor?
I just, we, you know, certainly, I feel the report is accurate. I've been through years where $27 million was reported, and it was reported to the public, not by me, but as a surplus of $27 million. So, then you get questions, "Well, $27 million, take half of it. Why do we have $27 million?" Because the $27 million was a completely inaccurate representation of the town's finances. Our effort is to not have that happen, and really reflect-- The major point is what money is available to offset future costs? Because that's what everyone really wants to know. So, when you leave out there $27 million, or figures that are way beyond what is reality, that does an extreme disservice to the average person who looks to trust us to tell them what really is the truth. We're telling them the truth.
But Mayor, I read it on Facebook. It must be true.
But, but in all seriousness, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Councilman Fishbein and Councilman Zandry for, you know, sticking their elbows into the financial stuff, because you guys are several steps removed, and I respect that, and I respect your questions and the work that you just did, and thank you.
Certainly. I know there are questions from Counselor Chortel.
Break my silence tonight. I just want to say that Mr. Boz met with Councilman Marone and myself, and I'm very appreciative of the time that you spent with us, taking your time out of your day. We didn't get a sandwich, though, though we'll take that up offline.
Well, it was in the morning. You could have brought some eggs or something, you know.
Okay, all right. Okay, right, and--
Bring Sullivan and make him bring steak.
Correct. I think you make time for a lot of people, and it's not always, and people don't realize that. I'll say it on camera. I know you make time for people to explain this stuff, people who the public will be familiar with on camera, who don't sit up here. So, just want to get that on the record. You know, and my, again, as a rookie, I'm less concerned, you and I, we all started a conversation, our conversation kind of morphed from this report, this press release, what's the surplus, all that, with both Councilman Marone and myself, to kind of the data that we get on a monthly basis that we talked about, because I personally am struggling with 150 pages of financial info. I, coming from the Board of Ed, and we, so I, after budget season, I do want to continue that discussion with Councilman Marone, because I think that might be an area that we, maybe we could improve a little bit, to help us get a better handle on the monthly expenses. But overall, just grateful for, for your time with me.
And I make that offer to all nine council members, please, call me. I know Mr. Laterno, over the years, has been in here or there, and John Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan, I know Mr. Testa works days now, but anytime, if you'd like to, please just give me a call, and just give us time to arrange it. Even early mornings, I've met with people at 7:30, 8:00, before they've gone to work, you know, a little after work, a little after work, 5:30, 6 o'clock, just please, it's what we're here for. Thank you.
You're set. Counselor Marone?
Yeah, Chris stole some of my thunder, but I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Mr. Boz for, for meeting with us and spending your time to go through the budget. I had a lot of questions going into this initially, too, and a lot of the things I was reading, that the public was commenting on, and came to learn that there was actually an easy explanation for, for a lot of these concerns. So, I do appreciate that, and I would also like to echo on the 150-page financial report that we receive monthly, that I think there's, there's probably, if there's a way to boil that down to some of the things that we really need to know, as opposed to the whole picture, I think that would be greatly appreciated.
Let me, let me think it through, and let me maybe poll the council members, and see something that, no, okay, or maybe not, but, well, we could maybe work towards something that's a little bit simpler for you to look at. But you've heard from the audience tonight, you want people who want even more detail, and they want it electronically, and they want it the day after, or before the month is even closed, so I will, I will do my best to, to do everything that the nine of, the nine leaders of the community, and the 10th leader of the community, need to have, if you don't, if I may put it that way.
Would a monthly report on the surplus be okay?
Yeah, like the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut started in August at $30 million deficit, and now they're up to $231, and unfortunately, a whole bunch of poor souls, and I know a lot of folks who work for the state, I'm sure you folks do, too, they're gonna, innocent folks, gonna lose their jobs because of the, some of the projections that get made, that don't come true, because they use those projections to do their current year budgeting.
That is terrible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I think part of the, part of the problem that existed recently was not so much a-- It was more an explanation of, of what you did with the money.
Yeah.
Where you put it.
Yeah.
Because when somebody stands up and says, "Well, you know, you had $2 million at the end of the day," at the end of the day, on paper, there it was, you had 2, and then you said, 'No, we didn't, we had 974.'"
You're, you're correct.
Both, but the, the problem is, both of you are right.
Correct.
And I think what we were doing is, as an administration, you were arguing about the definition of a surplus, the definition of this, and it appeared that we were not acknowledging that we took in 2-plus million dollars more than we put out. We were just, it appeared that you weren't acknowledging that. You were saying, "No, we didn't, we only took in 900,000 more than we put out." Because somewhere along the way, you were, you were allocating some of that 2 million somewhere in the bookkeeping, and, and an explanation along those lines might have taken, might have added a little peace of mind. Because I don't think anyone is saying, "You're hiding anything, the money's there, we all know it's there." Someone is just trying to say, and, and again, the argument of did, I think the, the argument that's being made by certain members of the public a lot, and then some of us contemplating arguments, too, is an argument about the budgeting process, it's not about the, the final numbers in the audit.
I understand, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Sure.
I think, so, that's where I think the problem has been. Because when I look at that chat, that paragraph Craig brought up, and, and even when I listen to your explanation, I still look at it and say, "We're using the word actual, the words actual revenues, and actual expenditures, and in two different lines, we're going from 5 million to 974,000 dollars."
Yes, on a, on a...
By using the same words, and that's what's got, and I've been doing this a long time, and I'm, I get flustered.
Okay.
When I try to recall how, where it all is. So, I think maybe it, some of this has to do with the way we're talking about it, and the way we're presenting it to the public, and to us, frankly, that would probably ease a lot of problems.
Okay.
We could talk about different ways to, to present it in the future. And then, we still have the issue of, okay, when we budget, somewhere along the way, we, you know, there's a legitimate argument that, you know, "Gosh, we found a way to take 2 million dollars more in taxes than we really needed to." And, when the, as an administration, when you argue against that, I, I think... We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be arguing the, the semantics. We should be saying, "You know what? Perhaps, but that's, that's, that's a criticism of the budgeting." And, and again, you could say, "This is how we prefer to budget," and we could say, "Okay, that's cool," you know, or not. But to, to not acknowledge it, because it's, and because the bookkeeping results in 974, because we've allocated some of it, I just think it, it...
Sure.
That's what causes some of the problem, I think.
You're, you're correct.
You know what I mean? Personally, I think that's what causes some confusion.
That is, that is one of the, the, the big drawbacks with regards to, to government accounting, it is, and government financial reporting. I don't want to say government accounting, government accounting and private accounting, doing the books are about the same, but it's how you report it that is vastly, vastly different. And we have to be care, I, I think we have to be careful in trying to tell the public as to what, what is available in, 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 in the future, and that's what we try to do with this, and, you know, that's, again, what really threw it off, I think, this year, councilman, more than anything, is because normally, the schools had a very good year. I think they acted very appropriately by coming to the council to say, "Look at, can we utilize the state statute which allows us to utilize up to 1% of our budget into the, what we're calling the 1% fund?" You folks agreed with that. I, I certainly don't like last-minute spending just to spend your budget down, because that usually is inaccurate spending or inefficient spending, so I, I commend them for that, you know, and, and you folks allowed them to, to carry that forward into the new fiscal year. And, but, but it was such a large amount this year, we've never seen that before, 800 grand, you know what I mean? And we had a couple of grand on our side, which we then asked you folks to designate as an appropriation in force. So that really would have been spent, that million bucks would have been spent in prior years. 800 on the schools, and another couple hundred on the, on the general government side, and you know what? The, the, we wouldn't be having these discussions, because guess what? The total fund balance would have went up by 974,000, and the unassigned would have went up approximately the same. You know what I mean? It's just a glaring difference because of the under expenditures by both, the general government and 800,000, give or take, for the schools, and a couple hundred thousand dollars for the, on the, on the town side, which legally, we carried forward through the council actions. So that really made it look like a very weird year, and I, I, I do, I appreciate folks digging into it.
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I can truly tell you, this subject has been one of continuing repetition, it's been just about every year I have served. In part because it is very complex, in part because there's plenty of room to intentionally not understand... What's lost sight of is there are two audit statements here. One is a cumulative balance, and one is a budget year. And once you get into trying to determine the definitions of some of those terms, you rapidly need to be an accountant. It's not simple. The summary that was put out is accurate. It is accurate in defining exactly where we are as far as offsetting costs for a future year. If we were arguing about where money's missing or when any, anything, then I can understand a lot of angst and concern. But with all of that stated, I am very satisfied that we are arguing about surpluses. That's a good argument to have, because the other side of that is something we don't want to deal with, the deficits. Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments from the council on this topic? Counselors, Zandry.
I just want to follow up real quick, because I've gotten a lot of help from Jim Boz when, you know, I've called his office, or if I've sent an email through the, through the town clerk to get things followed up on, so I really do appreciate the follow-up. I, I can kind of concur with Counselor Testa on that, on that paragraph five. I, I can see where, because it's the same initial confusion that I had when I'm looking at actual revenues, actual expenditures twice, in the two different columns. I really like the way that paragraph six is outlined, because it basically gives you the general fund, accumulated fund balance. It's real clear, we're not talking about the prior budget, we're talking about the fund balance, and it basically breaks down every single segment. I think that possibly for future consideration, even if, even if the mayor's press release outlines it in the same fashion, if we have the ability to ask questions and have it broken down after the fact, even if, if that ends up being the case, in the same manner, where you can kind of walk it backwards. Because I even caught myself looking at this at one point and saying, "All right, 200, 2.889 designated for appropriation and force carryover, but that's not what it is. You told us it was 1.1, but that's from the budget side, not from the budget balance side."
Not from the accumulated side.
The accumulated side.
Correct.
So this is where people, when you, when you look at it fast, you're going, "All right, wait a minute, I gotta remember what I'm looking at."
You're right, and that's what the mayor, I think, just tried to allude to a moment or so ago, is to say that you're really talking two statements, you're talking what actually happened, what budgetarily happened, so, and you throw GAAP accounting in there, by the way, and that, by the way, oh, I could really get into something that you probably don't want to get into, but GAAP accounting even has us, we don't put it on our books, but it has to be shown in our financial statements, payments made on a municipality's behalf. For example, the Connecticut Teachers Retirement System payments, that the state of Connecticut makes for all certified education personnel, or they're supposed to make. If they don't make them, they still report them as though they made them to the towns. In our financial, in our audited financial statements, that is a 10 or 11 million dollar revenue, as a, you know, a, a grant revenue, and it's a 10, 11 million dollar expenditure on our books, because that's what governmental accounting standards require, not state law, governmental accounting standards. And it make, when you look at those statements, I, somebody's never said to me, "Well, gee, your budget was 150, but it says you spent like 161." Because that's GAAP, it's not budget. So it throws other factors into play as well.
Yeah, there's almost no way to make it any simpler than it is.
That's correct.
And it's, and again, you're, you're talking between the two paragraphs, the two different things, and, and so, you know, I, I can see where the confusion comes from, but, I mean, just again, for my own, per, I, chap, the way that paragraph six is laid out is very flow-through, and it may not be as simple to be able to do from the prior year's budget, but, I, I mean, at least all the explanation is there when we've got the question, so I appreciate that.
You got it.
I, I just want to, if I may, point out the fourth paragraph, and I'll read it. "When reviewing the audit report, it is important to realize there are two financial statements at issue," but this is right in here. "First, the audit shows the budget balance and operating results for the fiscal year 14-15. Second, the audit shows the general fund accumulative balance ending June 30th, 2015." So those are the following two paragraphs. Every word means something.
And, and I don't disagree. I, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from the council? Any comments from the public on this? All right, hearing none. Our next item is number 11, to go into executive session, can I have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, a move. We go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General State Statutes 1-225-F and Sections 1-206-B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending litigation matter of the Town of Wallingford versus Hart.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Kindly clear the council chambers. Call the meeting back to order as there are motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a move. We approve a settlement regarding the pending litigation matter of the Town of Wallingford versus Hart as discussed in executive session.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion on the council? Hearing none, any discussion from the public? Nobody's here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, no further business to be discussed tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? No good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.